I currently live here in Grass Valley with my parents. All of us have sleep apnea, so we all have CPAP machines that require power in order to run.
I also use a nebulizer and that's used to disperse medication that I need to get myself breathing again. When we have safety shut offs, we have to hook up our equipment to batteries that have inverters.
We have a generator that powers some of the things around the house, but then I obtained a pretty substantial battery from Freed. And it was so easy to go through the process to obtain a battery that I would recommend it to anyone who might have medical needs that require power or really anything. I would highly recommend contacting Freed.
So whether it's a snowstorm or a public safety power shut off, we really want folks to be thinking about, okay, what are the things I'll need on hand to weather the storm? Do I need to have candles? Do I need to have battery powered radio? Do I need to have flashlights? So what are the things that you'll need to shelter in place or address the disaster at hand?
So a go bag could be anything. It could be a backpack. It could be a suitcase. It's going to be something that you put together to sustain yourself, your family, your pets if needed. That's going to have food, water, medication, clothing, toiletries to get you by for 72 hours. You need to think of your go bag as the only resource you may have. Stores may be closed. The power may be out. So you may have to literally live out of this thing for a three day period as an evacuating.
If you are someone with a disability, maybe you have a chronic health condition. For me, I have type one diabetes. I have an insulin pump, right? And so that's a critical piece that I need to plan for if I'm going to ever evacuate or be away from my house frankly, for any amount of time, right? What we find often is that if people don't evacuate with their CPAP machine, with their oxygen concentrator, with their wheelchair, walker, then it can be difficult on the other end.
My name's Ulysses Palencia. I work in the 211 call center. I'm just a resident of Grass Valley. I have two daughters, a four year old and a one year old. In Nevada County, 211 is available 24/7. So what we provide for the community is information. That can be anything from directions to the resource centers. It can be letting them know where the fire is. You know, if they are themselves in an evacuation center, if it's a fire, if there's any information as to whether their power's coming back on during a PSPS. 211 gets the information that we provide directly from the county. So directly from the Office of Emergency Services. The whole team cares. We're all local community members. We all just want to help.
So we were all sleeping in bed on Thursday, November 8th in Paradise. And first the house phone rang, picked up my phone. It was my sister who lived a block or so away from us.
We were woken by a telephone call from my daughter. She said that we were being evacuated.
I left sooner than them. I had everything ready. They were on the way out the door.
There was not time to think about what you're going to take, what you're not going to take.
The night before the fire, I knew it was a red flag warning and I knew that it was a high risk. So on my way home, I filled up the tank.
On our way out, we didn't get too far from the house and we're watching fire come down the hill.
There was a machine shop right to my right, right there. And it had gas tanks and propane tanks. And I saw a lone ember kind of floating through, dancing through the air. And I watched it as it landed on the machine shop. In the time it took me to get my phone back into hand and to take a picture, it was engulfed in flames. And I knew that within moments, it would start exploding and I would be dead. And just as I moved out of the range of the explosions, they started happening. And I prayed for the people behind me.
10 minute drive normally to Chico became almost four hours. So it was a long trip.
We started to hear a pattern. People kept telling us their story of how they escaped the campfire. And they talked about how if it wasn't for my neighbor who came and knocked on my door to tell me there was a fire, I don't know that I would have gotten out alive. If it wasn't for my son who lives next door picking me up and putting me in their car and driving me out of there, I don't know how I would have survived. And so I started really thinking about this connection between isolation and how connected you are to your community, to your neighbors, to your friends, to your family, and how that can be really helpful in a time of a disaster.
So we were actually the beneficiaries of someone making that plan in advance to have that group of people that they were going to call. And that she saved my life that day. So absolutely having that network really saved lives.
Find your five. The idea is that, you know, find trusted allies that can be there and can be responsive and will check in with you if a disaster were to happen.
So we recommend that you put people in your network that are down the street, that are maybe the next town over, that are outside the county and maybe even outside the state.
The final tier of the ready, set, go is that go piece. And it's simply that, it's go. Evacuation information comes in two types. The first type could be an evacuation warning. This is essentially information that we're going to push out to the public, notifying them of a potential threat in their area where they may have to evacuate their home. An evacuation order is essentially that. We are telling people that it's time to go. There is an imminent threat to life and we do not believe that you have much time to leave the area.
Code Red is an opt-in alerting system that will dial your number. It'll send you a phone call, a text message, and an email notifying you of an emergency. That message is sent from our office, the Office of Emergency Services. It's going to be very targeted to your area and it'll be specific to you.
At 5:13, the phone rang with the Code Red call. And so as I was going up 49, I could look over to the left and see the flames in the canyon.
The next layer is for staff to actually be out driving in the areas with a high-low siren. There's no other reason you'll hear that in an area unless we're putting out that evacuation order. Not a warning, but an order.
My day started routine patrol, came in and I was notified by dispatch to respond out to the Jones fire. Houses that had evacuation tags made it so we could just pass by. We knew that the residents had already been evacuated. Residences that did not have the tags, we would have to physically go in, knock on the door, look in the windows, make sure there were no occupants inside.
Once you've been evacuated, as you're leaving, put this tag somewhere very clearly identifiable, whether it's a mailbox, a gate, your address marker, so that deputies and officers can quickly identify if your residence has already been evacuated.
I mean, you look out my back window here on the east side and you see how close this fire came. It was certainly a shock. And at the same time, it was such an incredible relief to have the house as safe as it was.
I mean, I think with personal preparedness and being ready, it can feel overwhelming. It can feel like a lot to do. And the most important piece is to just start with one little bite at a time.
Just start the conversation. Have some sort of plan. It can be as small as a meetup place, you know, a destination.
Welcome folks. We are about to get started. Commissioner Millman, if you'll lead us in the pledge please. Thank you. If the clerk will call the roll please.
Thank you, Commissioner Masternato. Please signify that you're present. Commissioner Millman?
Here.
Commissioner Duncan?
Here.
Commissioner McAtier?
Here.
Commissioner Garst?
Here.
Chair Masternato?
Here.
Thank you.
Tyler, any changes to the agenda?
No changes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Tyler. Okay. Moving on. I know there's still some folks filing in. Are we, did we decide to move the sign in sheet up to the lectern? No? Okay. So if you'd like to sign in, you can. If not, if you can file in, we'll get started here. First of all, thank you for welcoming us to Eastern Nevada County. It's not often we get to come up here and experience the difference between the east and the west. What a beautiful day. So thank you for having us. This is the part of the meeting where we have public comment from the public that has to do with anything that is not on the agenda. If you'd like to address the planning commission, any topic not on the agenda, now is the time to do that. If you'd like to address the commission, you can please approach the podium. Give us your name and address. You have three minutes to speak and we'll hear what you have to say. So it's, I'll open up the public comment period now for public comment not on the agenda. Anyone wish to speak? Okay, seeing none, hearing none, I will close the public comment period. Okay, moving on to today's hearing. I'll just kind of explain, you know, how the process works here, what we're going to do. At first, we're going to hear a presentation from staff, from county staff, planning staff on the project. There'll be some slides on the screens and we'll go through the entire project for everyone. After that is done, we will ask the applicant if they have anything to say at that time, although they'll be around and we'll be able to address them with some questions as well. But then they'll, after that, we will have some, maybe some brief comments and questions from the commissioners to staff and the applicant. And after that period of time, we will open the public comment for you folks in the audience to come up and speak on the item before us today. So that being said, this is Kyle's. I'll turn it over to you, Kyle.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, planning commissioners and everybody else here today. My name is Kyle Smith and I am a senior planner in the Nevada County Planning Department. And the project planner assigned to this project, the Alpenglow Timber Use Permit located at 10375 Silverado Way. So for a little bit of site background, the subject property is approximately 124 acres in size and situated within a Forest Service in holding. The zoning and general plan designation of this property are Forest 640. And the subject property does have a portion of the property with a scenic corridor combining district overlay, which you should be able to see here on the screen and in the faint red lines that run parallel to Highway 89. The combining district extends approximately 650 feet into the subject property on the northern edge, down to approximately 100 feet on the southern edge, again, as shown on the screen. The surrounding properties are all similarly zoned as Forest 640, with the exception, as you can see here, of the Hobart Mills industrial site on the east side of Highway 89. The parcel background, in 2001, the Nevada County Planning Commission approved a use permit for a church amphitheater and other associated structures. That project was never developed and all of the land use entitlement approvals are no longer valid because the project was not developed within the seven year development timeframe. There is a historic solid waste site on the southern edge of the parcel that has been there since generally before the church project. That's when it was identified by the County Department of Environmental Health. And this site will both be avoided through project design and conditions of approval and will also be required to achieve a clean closure certification by state regulators and the Department of Environmental Health prior to kind of final implementation of the project. The subject property is currently being used for temporary log storage. You can see from the aerial imagery here, some of the log decks that exist on the subject property. And in 2021, this temporary log storage use was determined by the Nevada County Planning Department to be an allowed use consistent with the purpose of the forest zoning district. As a result, no land use entitlements were required for the temporary log storage. There is a code compliance case open on the subject property generally pertaining to some unpermitted Conex containers that are on the site and some other activities. And similarly, that file will be required to be closed and come into compliance prior to final implementation of the project. So for a little bit about the project, and I'll dig into each of these components in future slides. But the project can be thought of as generally having kind of three components. The first is the sawmill facility component, which includes a number of structures that I will detail in coming slides. A residential facility component, including six units of employee housing, as well as supporting infrastructure, water tank for fire suppression activities and to serve the project, electricity extensions and road improvements, essentially from State Route 89 through the project site to all of the structures. Here is an image of the site plan, which we'll see a few times throughout this presentation, but wanted to give one kind of large view here for everybody to see early in the presentation. So the sawmill facility, as I mentioned, includes a number of structures, primarily a 48,000 square foot sawmill with a 6,000 square foot, excuse me, attached boiler plant is what that slide should say, structure. A 15,000 square foot firewood storage structure. A 9,600 square foot workshop. 3,000 square foot area that will be the location of three dry kilns. And then an approximately four and a half acre area on the other side of the proposed interior road for log decks and a partially enclosed debarker. Additional structures and facilities for the sawmill include truck scales, parking areas, and fuel and water storage areas. The residential and infrastructure components include six units of state regulated employee housing, including three one bedroom units and three three bedroom units. A 200,000 gallon water storage tank, which as I mentioned, is functioning to serve both fire suppression activities and the project components, both the residential and sawmill facility components. And then a number of road improvements, as I mentioned, starting from the encroachment to State Route 89, up Klondike Flat Road, Silverado Way, and serving the internal connections to both the sawmill facility structures as well as the residential duplexes. The construction has a 22 to 24 month proposed construction timeline. However, the Land Use and Development Code allows for an initial three year development timeframe with the potential for two, two-year extensions through extensions of time that are, that could be approved if the development is not completed within that first three years. The proposed operations are currently proposed to operate six days a week, Monday through Saturday, from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. to support two shifts. However, the biomass boiler and three kilns would potentially operate 24/7. The boiler to serve as energy production and heat for all the components and the kilns to drive the wood that is function of the sawmill. A condition of approval and mitigation measure has been developed and proposed by staff to limit truck trips to only into daytime hours from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. in order to mitigate some of the truck noise during the nighttime hours to the Klondike Flat subdivision and surrounding parcels. So the proposed project has been designed to comply with the forest zoning district site development standards. A few of them I have up here are property line setbacks 45 feet from the front, which is the northern property line essentially, and then 30 feet from all side and rear property lines. Building height limits, the forest zoning district allows for buildings up to 45 feet or three stories. Maximum impervious surface area, that includes roof lines, asphalt, think of anything that water cannot permeate through to get to the ground, is limited to no more than 5% of the overall subject property area. And the Land Use and Development Code also requires at least 20% of the subject property to be retained as permanent open space. And as I mentioned, the project has been designed to achieve all of these site development standards. For some additional design and comprehensive site development standards, the facility and residential structures have been designed to comply with the Nevada County, Eastern County Design Guidelines. They will be utilizing a CMU split wall face at the bottom few feet, as shown in the rendering here, with metal siding, metal roofs, metal roll up doors, and then aluminum window frames for the windows in primarily the sawmill and boiler rooms or boiler plant structures. This project and all structures are conditioned and mitigated to both utilize earth tones to fit in with the natural environment and also to limit reflectivity from any building materials to limit any of the aesthetic impacts or potential lighting impacts. The residential buildings, the three proposed duplexes are designed, as shown here in this rendering, with wood siding and wood trim, traditional asphalt roofing, and some heavy timber architectural elements. I would like to note that the employee housing component is subject to the standards defined in the California Employee Housing Act and will both be permitted and inspected and receive annual inspections from the State Department of Housing and Community Development under their employee housing program. The proposed project includes 24 lights on facility buildings utilizing LED area lights. That's the light that's kind of the furthest up in the screen here over the roll up doors on the sawmill boiler plant structures. And then utilizing LED gooseneck lights, that's these other lights shown on here, over all of the pedestrian doors for safety and to provide employees light in the dusk or evening hours. As a standard condition of approval and to comply with the Land Use and Development Code, all lighting for the proposed project is required to be downcast and shielded and also to implement sensors to avoid light spillage. And these traditionally include motion or time sensors, but could include heat sensors or other types of things. We don't have specific sensors identified in the condition of approval, but they are required to be censored to limit the times that those lights are on so they're not running essentially all night. The project is proposing to use the existing native vegetation on the subject property. It's traditionally pine woodland for screening and landscaping. And the project does include a proposed screening berm that will be vegetated nearby the entrance to reduce visibility to the structures from the entrance to the project site. The development would not be visible from SR 89 or from State Route 89, primarily due to topography. The highway goes into a little cut there. So there's a pretty significant vertical change from the highway grade and also through the natural vegetation or native vegetation that exists on site. The project applicant has proposed two signs on the subject property. One would be a monument sign located at the property line. That's on the eastern or right side, highlighted in a red circle here. And a directional sign located at the facility entrance to provide users some wayfinding to get to the sawmill facility. The signage design is, was designed consistent with the community design standards outlined in the Land Use and Development Code and East County Design Guidelines with a board form concrete base, heavy timber frame, and metal actual signage. This, this image here is the monument sign. However, the directional sign is also included in the staff report and other materials for everyone's review. So that was going through most of the site development standards defined in the Land Use and Development Code. I'll transition to some of the environmental, excuse me, environmental analysis that was conducted for the proposed project, starting with air quality. So the proposed project was reviewed by county staff and the Northern Sierra Air Quality Management District, both for potentially reasonable foreseeable impacts and for consistency with the air district's regulatory authority. Construction of the project is required to comply with a number of the air districts requirements, including having a dust control plan, vehicle operation requirements, which could include, or which do include limiting idling time and utilizing vehicles that achieve air district emission standards. And then in order for the boiler and facility to operate, they're required to receive what is called an authority to construct or a permit to operate from the Northern Sierra Air Quality Management District prior to finalization of those permits. As a part of that authority to construct, the air district does do annual inspections and constant monitoring of the outputs of the boiler. The operational component, once the project is, or once the project would be constructed, is required to limit a number of criteria air pollutants that are defined by the air district and by the state Air Resources Board. And conditions and mitigations have been, and conditions and mitigation measures have been placed on the project to both meet all statewide and district emission standards. And the second one to include a selective catalytic reduction device to limit nitrous oxide emissions from the proposed, from the proposed project due to the air district not quite being in a non-attainment zone for that criteria air pollutant, but the air district is fairly close to being in non-attainment. So as an effort to limit cumulative impacts of nitrous oxide, this device will be required to be fitted to the boiler unit. to be fitted to the boiler unit. The proposed project, including the residential component, will be required to utilize energy-efficient utilities generally beyond Title XXIV standards, and these apply to lighting, heating, and other systems that can utilize these energy-efficient technologies. And all of these conditions and mitigation measures are inspected and checked by either the county, or many of these are under the regulatory authority of the Northern Sierra Air Quality Management District. Moving on to biological resources, similarly, the project was reviewed by staff and the California Department of Fish and Wildlife for impacts to both biological impacts and water quality. There are a number of potential sensitive species that habitat could either exist onsite or nearby, or there have been recordings of those species nearby. Each of these species have slightly different analysis areas, as shown by the map on the screen here, but all of these species are going to be required to, prior to any construction, to have species surveys, surveys done to ensure that, or to preferably avoid any impacts. And then should avoidance not be at all possible, there are mitigation measures assigned to each of these specific species to avoid any, any potential harm, and that could include shifting the construction timeline to non-nesting or non-breeding seasons, having environmental monitors out on site, and other activities defined in these mitigation measures for A through four E to limit impacts to sensitive species. The western bumblebee is a fairly newly listed candidate species for the California Endangered Species Act. It was listed in twenty-twenty-two, I believe, and we did receive comments from Department of Fish and Wildlife that the potential for the species could exist due to habitat nearby and the migratory, or transitory nature of bees. And so as a result, following the publication of the staff report, staff has included a clarifying mitigation measure for western bumblebees, similar to that of the other candidate species listed, or other sensitive species listed here. In addition, the project is required to protect water quality, both through a construction, stormwater pollution and prevention plan for construction, and then to enter into the industrial permit, industrial SWIP, Stormwater Pollution and Prevention Plan for the operational aspect of the project. Moving to noise, the project was reviewed by county staff for reasonably foreseeable impacts and consistency with the noise standards defined in the Nevada County General Plan and Land Use and Development Code. Short-term construction activities are required to, are required to happen during daytime hours and on weekdays only, limiting vehicle idling to less than five minutes, and to locate stationary sources of noise, like generators, heavy vehicles, et cetera, as far from residences as practical during the construction phase. During the operational phase, the proposed activities have been modeled to adhere to daytime, evening, and nighttime standards of the Forest Zoning District that are defined in the Land Use and Development Code and the General Plan. And all traffic, and similarly with traffic-related noise, due to the ambient noise level increases due to traffic noise, as I mentioned previously, all truck traffic would be limited to daytime hours only. And under the noise modeling that was produced for the subject, or for the, for the proposed project, noise increases related to traffic would be under a five-decibel criterion that has been identified by the Federal Interagency Committee on Noise, I think I got that acronym correct, which identifies five decibels as a potentially significant impact. The project was also reviewed for traffic and transportation impacts by county staff, including the Department of Public Works and Caltrans, the State Department of Transportation, for foreseeable impacts to the transportation network, as well as compliance with both county and state roadway design standards. The change in traffic is not expected to result in significant impacts as identified by Caltrans or the County Department of Public Works. However, the change in traffic will likely result in changes to the traffic flow on both Klondike Flat Road and potentially State Route eighty-nine. Klondike Flat Road, as shown here in this, in this slide here, and all proposed internal roads leading to both the sawmill facility and the residential component are required to be improved to fire-safe road standards, and those would be inspected both by the Department of Public Works and by the fire agencies. One condition of approval has, or two conditions of approval have been included by Caltrans to increase site distance along State Route eighty-nine, both looking north and south, to remove some vegetation that is in the Caltrans right-of-way, to increase the site distance south and north. And the, the project applicant is also required to coordinate with Caltrans to move a speed limit sign that is currently located about a hundred, a hundred or so yards north of the encroachment. They'll be required to move that to enhance site distance heading south down State Route eighty-nine. And with the implementation of those conditions of approval, site distance going both north and south would achieve Caltrans requirements. The project was reviewed for fire safety and wildfire impacts by county staff, as well as by CAL FIRE, which currently is the service organization for the subject property and by, and by Truckee Fire Protection District, which will be the service organization for the subject property, to determine potential impacts as well as consistency with each regulatory body's standards and requirements. So as I alluded to just a second ago, the project is required to enter into Truckee Fire Protection District Service Area through one of two mechanisms orchestrated by the LAFCO, the Local Area Formation Commission. One being a traditional annexation, where the district would annex the property and actually bring it into their, their jurisdiction, and then a second could be an out-of-area service agreement. This flexibility was provided primarily for the district, given the location of the subject site, because annexation may prove difficult, because they may be required to essentially annex all of the lands up to that site that are not currently part of the district. So, this condition was drafted to retain some flexibility there. In addition, a two-hundred-thousand-gallon water storage tank that I mentioned for, as well as extensions to an eight-inch water mainline, I've been determined to be adequate to serve both building sprinklers for all the proposed structures, use of the facilities, and the fire department connections that exist on the subject site. All of the structures are required to meet California Building Code and the Wildland Urban Interface, or WUI standards defined in the California Building Code, as well as Truckee Fire Protection District's Defensible Space Ordinance, which went into effect last year, and which will mirror essentially CAL FIRE's Defensible Space Ordinance that is upcoming. So, the, as I mentioned in the last few slides, the county conducted an environmental review of the project as lead agency under SEQA, and the planning department prepared a draft initial study and proposed mitigated negative declaration pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, and the SEQA guidelines. This document was circulated initially for a thirty-one-day comment period, and we received significant volume of comments and requests to extend the comment periods. So, planning staff, just due to the timing of things, couldn't extend the comment period, so we created an additional thirty-one-day comment period. So, this project, or the environmental document was essentially out for review for a little over two months. Comments requested, or comments received by state agencies and regulatory agencies, both at the regional and county level, requested slight revisions or modifications to a number of mitigation measures that are discussed in the staff report. But many of these changes were non-substantive in nature or clarified some specific requirements. I did mention the bumblebee mitigation for the newly listed candidate species. Another four B was extended the monitoring season for a number of candidate birds and nesting bats for their longer nesting and roosting period. And then nine A was the hazardous materials section mitigation, which clarified the Department of Environmental Health and La Hantin Water Quality Control Board's responsibility relating to the solid waste site and clean closure certification requirements under La Hantin's authority. As I mentioned, these revisions that staff proposed were generally non-substantive in nature and clarified existing mitigation, and therefore did not rise to the level of recirculation requirements that are identified in the SEQA guidelines. The proposed project has been reviewed for consistency with both the Nevada County General Plan, the overarching policy document for development in the county, as well as zoning consistency with county zoning regulations and Land Use and Development Code. Staff has determined that the proposed project is consistent with the intent and design of the forest general plan designation, and I have copied the intent directly out of the general plan here and can read it for the group, that this general plan designation is intended to provide for both the production and management of primarily timber resources, as well as compatible recreation and low-density residential uses, wherein the timber and forest resources are of the primary use, while the recreation and lower-density residential uses are also allowed in the forest zoning district, excuse me, forest general plan designation, but similarly with the zoning district. And staff has also determined that the proposed project is consistent with the Forest six-forty scenic corridor combining district zoning designation that currently exists on the subject property, because all of the proposed land uses, the lumber mill, which is identified as development and processing of natural resources in the Land Use and Development Code, the biomass boiler unit, which is identified as a private power plant, including biomass for, biomass fuel production in the Land Use and Development Code, as well as employee housing. Again, I would like to clarify that the employee housing is an allowed use, not subject to land use entitlements, subject to state regulatory authority, but without the other uses on the properties, there would be no employee housing. And so that's why it's all sort of packaged together and brought forth to the commission today. And as I discussed in previous slides, the project has either been designed or conditioned and mitigated to comply with all of the comprehensive site development standards that are outlined in the Land Use and, Land Use and Development Code, as well as community design standards and the Eastern County Design Guidelines, which are the design guidelines for everything essentially kind of east of the Sierra Ridge. Throughout the project, or application and review, so essentially since the project was submitted in May, I believe, May of last year, through to today, the planning department has actually received more than four hundred comments relating to this project. Some of the additional comments are both included in the memorandum to the planning commissioners that was published yesterday, August seventh, as well as there were a few comments that I received sometime between last night, when I left work, and today, when I started driving up to Truckee, that have also been included for the commissioner's benefit, and have been added to the back of the room at the staff packet. And all of these comments that have been received to date will be included in the project file. These comments identified both support for the project, but also a variety of concerns that include, but are not limited to this list here, relating to impact and areas of concern relating to traffic, air quality, noise, community character, safety, and a number of other items that are both listed here and identified in the almost seven, I believe, more than seven hundred pages of total comments that your commission has received and reviewed. As I discussed, planning department staff did develop a memorandum to the planning commission that was published yesterday regarding additional comments that were received by the department after the publication of the original staff report. Many of these comments reflect similar issues and concerns which were identified on the last slide, as well as a couple more that I will speak to here. The first is a question of whether these comments achieved what the SEQA guidelines define as the fair argument standard and the substantial evidence test, identified in SEQA guidelines, Code of Regulations one-five-three-eight-four, which I have put up here on the screen. But generally speaking, fair argument standard and substantial argument test can be met when technical experts have identified a potentially significant impact that was not identified in the initial study. And although a number of these comments and issue areas did identify concerns and issues with the environmental review, they did not identify impacts that rose to what is, or what is considered a significant impact pursuant to SEQA. So, each of the environmental review and impact areas identified in SEQA generally have thresholds of significance to define either a no-impact scenario, a less-than-significant-impact scenario, or a significant-impact scenario. And impacts can be mitigated to a less-than-significant level, and should all potential impact areas be limited to this less-than-significant level pursuant to SEQA, the mitigated negative declaration is the appropriate environmental document for the review. The next sort of level up of environmental review is considered, is called an environmental impact report, and this level of document is only required and expected when there are significant impacts identified as above those thresholds of significance for SEQA. And when those significant impacts are identified, that's the trigger for an environmental impact report and a potential for the need for what's considered a statement of overriding considerations, wherein in order to approve a project with significant impacts, the statement of overriding considerations is required to be adopted. In addition to the SEQA discussion in the memorandum, the project applicants and representatives In addition to the SEQA discussion in the memorandum, the project applicants and representatives submitted three addendums to technical impact analyses that were prepared for the proposed project, one relating to traffic, one relating to air quality, and one relating to noise impacts. And these addendums attempted to analyze what was considered a busiest day scenario. So, just the nature of the operations, not all, not every day would have the exact same level of impact and that those averages and essentially aggregates were identified in the initial and subsequent technical analyses. But in order to provide some additional clarity about the essentially kind of peak potential impacts on any one given day, these three addendums included this busiest day scenario and determined that even on the busiest day of operations, that those three issue areas would not rise to a significant impact level. And even conducted some sensitivity analysis to determine how close some of these impact areas were to potentially significant impacts. And many of them were not very close. I believe the level of service was in order of magnitude essentially five times higher than proposed project outputs. So, as a result, even under busiest day scenarios, environmental impacts would be limited to less-than-significant levels with mitigation. And as a result, the mitigated negative declaration is the appropriate environmental document for the proposed project. So, with that, Staff has included recommendations here on the screen for your review, and I am happy to respond to any comments that the Commissioners may have.
Thank you, Kyle. Before we go any further, folks, I'm, I'm, I have eyes on six to eight chairs up front here. Maybe nine, if somebody wants to come down and fill them, take the load off. Okay. So, briefly, for the Commissioners, if anyone has any quick questions for Kyle before we hear from the applicant, or we can wait till after we hear from the applicant and the public, so it's up to you guys. Anyone have anything? No. Okay. So, that said, now is time to hear from the applicant. Do we have a spot where the applicant is at the podium? Okay. So, I guess, first off, probably for all of us here, not just the Commissioners, but all the folks here attending is, from the applicant, would be good to hear what this project is, what it does, and what's it achieve, you know? What's the product? What's the finished product? So, now is the time. Is the applicant present? Please give us your name and position and say, thanks.
Chair, Planning Commission. My name is Gavin Ball. I'm a local planning consultant here in Truckee, both privately and publicly over a 30-year period here in Truckee. Thanks for the segue. That's exactly what we're going to do today, is provide the what and the where and how did it evolve, what it is, where did it come from. That's exactly our presentation today. Thanks, Kyle, for an excellent presentation. You covered a lot of ground, was really professional, you've been that way the whole time, we really appreciate it. There's a lot to cover, a lot that you provided. We'll make sure that we adjust the presentation here so we're not redundant and be efficient. Thanks, Planning Commission, for making the trip. Welcome to Truckee. Today, I'm going to be representing Mr. David Mercer and his wife and his project here in Truckee. It's known as Album Go Timber and his directly-related business known as Cross Check Services. That's the forestry management piece of this project and his business. I'm going to start off by just giving a quick, Kyle, I'm not sure. I'll try to use this too. Just a quick introduction to our team and Mr. Mercer. David's going to give here in a minute his own presentation about who he is and his business, so I'll defer to him there. Our whole team is here, most of the team. We have a, it's very diverse and qualified and experienced team, all of which are ready to contribute. I'm not going to go through every name by way of efficiency and expediency, but they're here and ready. And what we're going to do is, I'm going to be giving the bulk of the presentation, but we're certainly going to be deferring to our team for any given answer based upon their experience and expertise. So, that's the, that's the introduction. From that, I'm going to let David Mercer, because he has a really good story to tell, and we're going to let him, even though he doesn't like to, he's going to speak a little bit about himself. He likes to speak, just not about himself. And give a little bit of background about the operation, his business, and just himself, because it matters.
Hi, everybody. I'm David Mercer, and thank you for making the trip over the hill. And thanks for everyone that showed up, means a lot. It's good to see everybody here. So, I'm David Mercer. I was born in Tahoe City. There's some people in this room that were there when I was born, which means a lot to me. I was raised in Olympic Valley by a lot of other people that were in this room. My parents came here in the early 70s. They started Dave's Deli in Squaw Valley, as it was known. My mom ran that for 50 years. It's kind of where I grew up. And before that, my father had the Fanny Bridge Inn, which turned into the Bridgetender. So, that was his roots here. I've worked at what was Squaw Valley, Palisades, for most of my life. I started working in the forest and I've worked on and off in the forest for about 35 years. I've had Cross Check Services for the last 20. We're a forestry company. That's what we do. We are, we pride ourselves on being stewards to the forest and to the land and to the community. So, I wrote a little statement there at the bottom, which you guys are welcome to read. Yeah, that's, that's me. So, Cross Check Services, that's, that's our forestry operation. We do forest thinning work. That's what we do. We thin from below. We take out the small trees that shouldn't be there because fires should have dealt with them. And we try and return the forest to its more natural state prior to when Europeans settled here and kind of mowed the forest. So, we're trying to get it back to where it's a fire-adapted forest, so when we have fires, it's not going to burn our towns down. That's, that's our goal. And to leave the forest in a way better condition than when we found it. I pride myself in how I live, that if I'm doing something, I'm going to leave it in a better state than how I found it. And that's if I borrow something from somebody or whatever it is. That's just how I am, and the people who work for me, that's how we operate. So, yeah, we're, we've been around for a while. I have employees that grew up here in Truckee, grew up in Tahoe. They've worked for, you know, a long time since I've started this. And we take great pride in what we do. Well, there you go. So, the challenges that we face. That's all right. So, you know, these are typical forest stands around here on the east side. They're really full of a lot of trees that shouldn't be there. They burn really hot when they burn. And we try and get them back to a state where the agencies and the landowners we work for can put fire back on the ground, or if fire naturally occurs, it doesn't wipe everything out. And the challenges that we've had of late is we don't have anywhere to take our logs for a couple of reasons. SPI being the only sawmill operator left in the state, at least anywhere around here, they don't take some of the species that grow here. And then, when they have catastrophic fires like what's happening today on the Park Fire, which is burning north of 100,000 of their acres, they'll shut everybody off and not take logs because they have to deal with their own logs. So, that means we either deck logs, like is in this picture, those are from a couple years ago, or we don't do the work. So, we would rather do the work, so we need to come up with a solution. And the solution was to kind of skip SPI and figure out our own solution for milling the wood that we cut and what some of the other contractors around here are dealing These are a lot of the people that we work for and support us and have, since we've started. We've worked for all of these agencies and landowners over the years, currently work for a lot of them, and some of the other entities that are behind what we do in general as far as our forestry work and also what we're trying to do with this project. So, I think that's about, that's about it for me.
Thanks, Dave. So, consistent with the very appropriate segue into what you're looking from us, here's the 20-foot level sum that we're going to provide today. As mentioned, we're going to run through this pretty quickly, especially as a lot of stuff's redundant, based upon the really good staff presentation and really detailed staff presentation. We're going to run through where it is, where it is, where it came from. There's a story to be told there in terms of its need, its benefit, and the approach into the design. We're going to be talking quite a bit about the property and the, both the property and the surrounding fundamentals, what the project is, some of the details that, a lot of which were covered by Kyle, some of which were not. We'll also touch on some of the specifics and mostly in focusing on appropriately, because we've been hearing this quite a bit, is traffic noise and air quality. The approach that we're trying to bring here is, is fact-based. All we're really trying to do is bring a presentation that brings information, it's based on good data, analysis, and the conclusions of both the technical reports and the SEQA document that, that it relied upon. Along the way, we're going to be getting a spattering of just context and clarity in a couple of different ways. Spatially, we're going to give more detail on how things relate spatially, historically and regulatorily. Kyle, thanks. So, what it is, it's more than a sawmill. There's been a lot of talk about the sawmill project, but there's another piece to it, and Dave just mentioned it, which is the Cross Check Services. And they go hand in hand, they're mutually beneficial, they're related, they're connected, and they're integral. And that matters because that provides efficiency in all ways. And that's really what this project's trying to get to, and I'll explain that a little bit further later. There's also been a little bit of confusion by way of, there's been some claims about it being a biomass facility, and it's not that. This is a sustainable and efficient biomass-based boiler that provides thermal energy for both the operation and both the sawmill and it's, and all the buildings related to the project, commercial project, and also the residential. It's, it's really efficient and it's innovative. It's, it's a modern facility. It utilizes just safe technology, and it maximizes, as Dave mentioned, the use of small logs. And that matters too. It's a, it's a key point of his business and the efficiency that we're going to be talking about all night, or all day. The, it's modestly scaled. We want to say, this is not, this is not the SPI facility, it's not even near that in terms of size or production or, or truck traffic. The, and Dave mentioned, and this matters too, it's a matter of import in that he's local, it was conceived by him, it's owned by him, it's operated by him, and he therefore has that care and investment into his project, and it shows in what he does and, and this project. At the end of the day, the project goal, and we're going to be talking about this too, it's to advance forest health and reduce wildlife, wildfire hazard. And with that, and by implementing that, we get to an end goal, and this is not to be cheeky, and excuse my French, but at the end of the day, this project and his operations are trying to help protect our collective derriere. It really is about that. And we'll talk about that a little bit, especially the next slide, please. When you look at its relationship to not only Truckee being a few miles north of Truckee, but the fact that it's surrounded by 250,000 acres of forested land, and that's forested meaning trees, and it's also forest, meaning the US Forest Service. It's a huge amount of land in which he operates, and we're going to talk about that too a little bit. It's not coincidental that this location is one that's centered right in the middle of the area that he works in. This is his region, everywhere from North Lake Tahoe north in a 50-mile radius, that's where he works. And he mentioned that it's 70 miles to the near sawmill and the problem that creates. Thanks, Kyle. Where is it, just locally and specifically and spatially? We want to give this, this representation here. On the left is a, the same image that Kyle presented earlier. It's the same plan. It's just overlaid on a, on a LiDAR image to show some relief. There really are two components that I wanted to just point out. You know this already. In the lower right, in the black and white image and the LiDAR image, is the sawmill facility and all its components. The housing on the left, you can see that accessed by a separate road. That is composed of the three duplexes, six residential units. For spatially, just to kind of understand what this means in terms of relationships with the surrounding community, the sawmill is located about 1,200 feet from the intersection represented by the, at the entry point of the red arrow on the left. And that the, the access road from arrow to arrow, that's represents from Highway 89 to the entry on Klondike, is about 1,700 feet. The accessories map on the right similarly shows the sawmill location of the red star, and it also shows similarly the, the entry point from Highway 89 north and the entry to the project site. And then you can see the, the platted area with a spattering of homes to the north. Next slide, Kyle, please. So, as requested, that, we're going to give you a little bit of rundown here about the project need and benefit. And really, as Dave mentioned, it starts and ends with just the lack of infrastructure, that there's just a real compromise to regional forest health and community protection, lacking the ability to have an outlet for the logs that he's creating by way of forestry management and thinning operations. Those distant outlets in Lincoln and Quincy, when they're available, they're just unreliable. As Dave mentioned, they're taking other logs from their own projects, and quite often, they're not open, not available. That means compromised forestry management operations. There's just a lack of alternative sites. It's fortunate, as we see it, that this is 124 acres that were available and zoned and designated appropriately for this kind of a project. It's really ideal in terms of its location for a couple of reasons I'm about to get into. One is that it's centered, dead center in the middle of his operation, but it also has a, has a really convenient location relative to past and future wildfire risk. We're about to talk about that. And again, at the end of the day, what we're trying to get to, what this project gets to, is healthy and resilient forests. That's really what the end goal is of this project is. We need forest restoration. This project can offer and will five to six acres per day, meaning 1,500 acres per year of managed lands. And that there's a real demand for not only the lumber, but also for these value-added wood products that I'm going to speak to in a little bit, and I'll tell you what that means and what it is. There's a lot of benefits, numerous benefits. And we're going to talk about a little bit and show you the efficiency and the sustainability and innovation that's being incorporated and utilized with this modern-day sawmill facility. It's significant in terms of its VMT, or vehicle miles traveled reduction. Those vehicle miles with a more local sawmill facility come down significantly, obviously, versus having to travel 70 miles or more to the maybe available sawmill facilities to, to, as an outlet for the logs that are created. It has a significant economic benefit. It has, he has not only his employees, but also has indirect job creations. He, as we mentioned, he's providing housing for both his employees and their families. And that, at the end of the day, this is a project that's fully aligned, not only in its goal in, in creating healthy and resilient forests, but also in aligning with all of the county, the state, and federal, and town even, goals of the same, forest health and resilient forests, to reduce wildfire risk reduction or reduce fire risk. Next slide, please. So, we talked about how the project location is central to his operation. It's also very much central to It's also very much central to the wildland fire history that we show on the left. On the left-hand side, the yellow star, this time a yellow star, being representative of his project location. And this is the wildfire perimeter map during a 10-year span. And it's pretty evident, I like to say that if pictures tell 1,000 words, then we're telling 2,000 words here, because there's two things that are happening. On the left is the obvious island of unburned forests, right dead central of this project location. On the right is more representative of the 100-year fires throughout the state, in which essentially the entire state has burned. So between the two, you can see that there's an island right here, and it happens, not coincidentally, coincide with the operation and the location. Next slide, please. There's another relationship here, and it's the Measure T that was recently, or relatively recently, adopted by the Truckee Fire Protection District. We, as a community, and those members within the district, elected, elected to tax ourselves for the exact same reasons that are trying to be achieved for this project, which is fuel reduction, wildfire prevention. These are direct quotes right from the Community Wildfire Prevention Fund and their plan that talks about the need for this and the growing problem, and the need to reduce fire intensity, everything we already talked about. So those things in, in what's trying to be achieved by Measure T and the project goals here are fully aligned. So, and, and as we mentioned, that there's not an outlet for logs. There's just, it's just very limited. It's a constraining factor. This project at this location can be an outlet for those Measure T projects that are funded by Measure T funds. And we went through, Kyle went through appropriately with the, the need as a requirement of this project to either annex, or, as he says accurately, in agreement with the district to provide services for the project and the site. Please. So where it came from, I think this is, this is going to try to get to your question, Chair, of the project design, where did it, where did it come from? So Kyle mentioned the, the church project, as it's known, back in 2001, and that, that's, that's an old document. That ship had sailed. The project wasn't built. The environmental document's old, but we used it to learn and listen and understand what were the issues then. We used those technical analyses and supplemented it with more modern-day, today's both analysis and conclusions. We did, this project started in even pre-design, in going to the County of Nevada, and through a pre-application process, and this was in early 2021. And we had to focus then on a communication with and trying to understand and extract the answers in terms of the acceptableness and whatever requirements may be required of both state transportation and fire agencies. So what I'm getting is that there's been processes in which Dave and, and his team, with my assistance, have, have gone through, and we learned, and we applied, and we responded to, and that's the project that you're seeing today. In doing so, we also, obviously, because we're understanding the relationship between this project site and the neighboring area to the north, that we needed to factor these things, and it's why we're a little heavy here at the end of my presentation about noise, traffic, and air quality. We wanted to consider that surrounding neighborhood. We wanted to premitigate it. That was the idea. We didn't understand that there's issues, that there's not a road that's really been used for this kind of facility despite its appropriate zoning and general plan use designation. So we pre, we premitigated it. We made sure that all of the, the sawmill components, those that make noise, are enclosed, and some doubly enclosed, which I'm about to touch on, and that it was centrally located, meaning move the sawmill away from Klondike to the south, and orient the buildings so that openings in the walls and the access weren't facing that direction. We'll show you that in a minute. And then, and I mentioned this, too, and it's really important, that this is not an old-school sawmill. Now, this is a modern-day sawmill. It's efficient, it's sustainable, it's innovative that way. It has today's technology. It's, in that way, it's environmentally respectful, and it's sound. And we know that because the secret document, the secret analysis and its conclusions support that approach. Everything we're outlining here is the evolution of the project and how it came to be. And all of that, including the, where it came from and its technology and its analysis, conclude that through the secret assessment, that it is environmentally respectful, sound, and mitigated. And perhaps the, and arguably the most important point of this slide is that truly, it's a model project. This is something that other communities can replicate and, and use in their communities because it's different. It's not old-school. It's super-modern, efficient, and innovative. Thanks, Kyle. So Mr. Mercer purchased in, in early 2020, 2021. I mentioned that was after the pre-application, where we got some level of surety from the county that, of the fundamentals, of the basics, of the process and the, the zoning and the general plan structure, which we're about to talk here in a little bit. You know, you know where the access is, you know that, how the acreage. It does have, its access is accommodated, and not only the access to this parcel via Klondike Flat Road, but also the access provided to everybody in that area, is a 60-foot right-of-way that's all encompassed on this 124 acres. It has, as Kyle mentioned, the forest zoning and the scenic corridor and the setbacks, all of that's compliant. The general plan, we've touched on that, we're going to touch about it on it again here in a minute. Current use, and that's already been touched on. The prior use, that's something that, this is also part of the project design in, in trying, in, in utilizing, in trying to utilize the most, the already previously disturbed areas. This is not, this is a project site before he purchased it in, in 2021, that had a lot of already cleared and disturbed areas. The project looks to utilize that in order to minimize more disturbance, more tree removal. And then the disposal site was referenced. I just want to touch, touch in that just a little bit. Accurately, Kyle talked about how this is a small, maybe he didn't call it small or isolated, but isolated, meaning it doesn't have overlap with the project boundary. It's separated, it's distinct. It's been there for 30 years. It was 30 years ago where the County of Nevada had an enforcement action against the past owner in order to make some action and clean it up, never happened. That's happening under this ownership and this project. Next, please. So here's the, the surrounding area fundamentals, and it's pretty boring because it's all the same. The, we were going to put up the same general plan or zoning map that Kyle had produced, but it doesn't tell us very much because there's only, everything has the same zoning, it's the same scenic corridor, it's the same general plan land use of all the forest designation. It's, and it's, I don't think we touched on it very much, or Kyle did not, in terms of its location within a rural region. And that's something that we're going to talk to you in a minute here, and that matters. Hobart Mills, north and to the east of this project site, where the current cross-check services operation is, is zoned differently. That's the one, that's the anomaly amongst the bigger forest zoning and forest land use designation that dominates the entire area on the screen. Klondike Flats is its own animal. It's different. It's not Todd Honor, it's not, it's not Prosser Lakeview, it's not Glenshire, it's not Sierra Meadows, any community that was planned. It's different. It's non-conforming. It doesn't set the bar. It's inconsistent with what the county is trying to achieve in terms of their own zoning and their own general plan designation and their own policies. It lacks some of the basic stuff, some of the basic things that this project looks to improve, like conforming access, meaning a straighter road, a wider road, a paved road, dealing with the drainage, and providing fire protection, which we'll talk about in a minute. Next slide, please. If I'm talking too fast, let me know, I'm trying to speed it up. We have a lot to get to. Some of the fundamentals, I noticed it earlier, I mentioned it earlier. It's an enclosed operation, and that's purposeful, and trying to respond, be smart relative to where, where it's located. The enclosure includes the entirety of the sawmill, and one of the noisier components of the sawmill is the planer. That planer has, is located within the sawmill, whether it's, when it's in its own enclosure. So that's a way of double insulation, double sound mitigation that was built into the project, and it's part of the innovation and the modernness, if that's a word, of the project. It's limited in its size and scope. Kyle mentioned it. It doesn't have unlimited expansion, it has actually none. It's maxed out in terms of, in particular, that 5% impervious surface coverage that Kyle mentioned. Beyond this, there's not any room for anything else. Fire protection, Kyle mentioned that. This is a, it's a new 200,000-gallon above-ground storage tank that supplies water to the system. That system includes a series of hydrants on-site, and what we're proposing, and this is a new piece to the project, to bring an additional hydrant that would be located, it's, it's really an expansion of the existing fire system to help with that northerly area with their lack of fire protection that exists there. It has, and Kyle mentioned it, that not only the water quality improvements internally and externally, meaning internal to the site, but also external to the site along Klondike, and fixing and resolving some of the drainage and the flooding problems that exist at that Klondike Highway 89 intersection. It's fully mitigated, and then there's a lot of processes here to deal with procedurally and regulatorily in terms of its hazardous material storage and handling. All of that is, one, internal to the sawmill building, but also there's a complete management plan that's necessary to deal with those materials. And again, it's an innovative new model, and, and it's low pack, low impact. And that's a theme that we're talking about quite a bit here, is that, and I'll just say it one more time, it's modern in that it, it's not old technology. It's new and it's innovative. Next slide, please, Kyle. So we're going to drill down just a little bit into what does value-added wood products and what does that wood processing mean? It's not just lumber. This is a project that's bringing more than just lumber. It brings firewood and that biomass of wood heat, as I mentioned, and also mass timber. And that's another word for this laminated or compressed timber that's created internally within the sawmill building. What is that? Well, we talked about taking the smaller diameter logs, but also as part of this process, he's able to take the lower-grade lumber and create mass wood products out of that. That means, that's a process of, and I'm outlining here in the second bullet point, dry it, plane it, scan it, stack it, glue it, and press it. That glue that's utilized is a latex-based wood glue. It's similar to Elmer's. It's an industrial-grade Elmer's. It doesn't have odor, it doesn't have off-gas. There's been a lot of talk about that. It's, it's a low impact, much like the project as a whole additive to make this product. Why is it great? Well, and why is it beneficial? Well, it's the best use of the logs that he creates. It's efficient and it's innovative that way. It's a substitute for steel or concrete, and that helps to reduce its carbon footprint and impact. It helps sequester carbon, and it's durable, long-lasting, and it's fire-resistant. So it really has a lot of benefits, and that particular wood product does. Next slide, please, Kyle. So real quick, we're going to give you some, and you know this, this is this, the, just a, just a rundown and structure and hierarchy of, and the relationship between the general plan and as it's used as a policy guide in order to get to any given land use decisions. And that, you know, being the planning commission, and, and actually, some of you probably have worked on this and involved in the adoption of your own general plan, that it's the long-term guide, that it's what we use, all of us, in order to, for, to make decisions, especially as decision-makers, but we use it, too, to look at and understand appropriateness. And, and that's ultimately what I'm trying to get to. It's the foundation, it's the framework for future development, and as I note here, it embodies all of the public policies. And that's the whole range of policies, from noise, air quality, to safety and forests and economic development. All of those things are things that this project is wholly consistent with. Starting with, and in, in that structure and that hierarchy of being consistent with rural regions, and being very much consistent with the forest land use designation, being very much consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the general plan, and, and that gets us to an over-net result of consistency in implementing the Nevada County General Plan. We want to, because this is a land use project, we're going to focus a little bit on the land use piece of it on the next slide, please, Kyle. So as I mentioned, this is a, is a project that's located within the rural region, or rural regions of, of the county. And that's true of the entirety of the area, all 250,000 acres plus that I talked about earlier. And, and here's what it says. This is the Nevada County General Plan in defining or, or describing the purpose intent and intent of the rural region, that it talks, and it gives us and yourselves that kind of direction on what's appropriate. And this is what it says, that future development within the forest land use designation is considered to be appropriate. So then we jump to, okay, this is a forest land use designation, and as Kyle properly mentioned earlier, what is that intending to do? That's intended to provide the, the protection and management of timber and resources and its operations and management. That's, that's exactly what Kyle said, and it's really true. And then we look at, and we move to the next step, on a policy level, what does that mean? The county has a lot of policies that relate to agriculture and resource protection, but one particular policy and just overriding directive and guide from the general plan that we want to point to is the idea that let land use designations dictate development, especially in the forest zoning district. That's something that we see as a policy within the Nevada County General Plan. It's specific to talking about residential areas and residentially designated areas within this bigger rural region, but there are very few of those around the county, and certainly this area isn't designated residential. So, but this policy is really applicable in telling us, how do we look at it? How do we review? How do we use the, the general plan into, to guide decisions? So what we do then is, is jump down to zoning as the implementing tool of the general plan, and we jump to, and more specifically, the forest zoning. And of course, as the implementing tool to the general plan, that the forest zoning completely aligns with the forest land use designation in the rural region. Everything aligns, it should, it has to, it has to be internally consistent that way as a matter of law. Kyle mentioned the allowed land uses, I'm going to, and that's all accurate, I'm going to narrow it down to the things that are most significant here, and I think we're mostly talking about, which is sawmill and a wood yard. Those are the allowed uses, those are the agriculture, resource, and open space uses that are allowed within this zoning district. So, and within that structure and that hierarchy, what we get to is that the general plan is telling us that this zoning and these uses are appropriate within this rural region and this forest land use designation. And that's, that's our, that's the structure and hierarchy where we landed and we hope you land in, in looking at and, and guiding your land use decisions. Then we want to drill down a little bit and really get into the compatibility idea with the goal of coexisting. I mean, that's really what we're trying to do. It's not as if we don't understand and know that there's a, an area, some houses to the north. It's a shared road. We're looking to go through that and go through an analysis here and a few slides that I'm going to give you, that, how are we going to coexist? What does it mean? So next slide, please. And this is going to be a lot of information, and I'm just going to, I'm sure we're going to have other questions about it, and we'll get there here in a minute. But I'm just going to skim through this so we can be just clear on what it is, that Kyle did a really good job in explaining the typical busy day and, and what that is in terms of trips and what that means in terms of average daily trips. And the operation is necessarily variable. It varies day-to-day, month-to-month, and seasonally. In that way, in providing average daily traffic, the secret analysis and the traffic analysis in which it relied upon is accurate and true. It's the nature of the operation. Some days, they're going to be less, zero. Some days, there's going to be more. And that's, that's why we were trying to jump to, and I, and we appreciate Kyle's explanation in saying that this is our effort to provide additional clarity and, and, and full disclosure and transparency, that there are going to be other busier and peak-day traffic trips. And there's a couple of things that are factored into all the numbers that I'm And there's a couple of things that are factored into all the numbers that I'm showing here on the screen, which are probably confusing and too much. But the, one thing that the traffic analyst assumed, that there was going to be eight residential units at the time, that's what we were looking at, and it was too much, it came down to six. That brings residential traffic down by a number, not a lot. That's really not the issue. What we really want to do is establish that upper end, that peak day, just so we're all clear, that it's going to vary, and what that means, because of the operation and its nature. And as I mentioned, it's not, and it can't be a known quantity that way. There's too many variables. It's got to be able to respond to the type and the number, and the location of the materials that he's creating through his forestry management operation. It's got to be, it's got to be able to respond in certain days, on peak days, to those emergency wildfire ideas, and operation changes and constraints in the field. And Dave would be the best guy to speak to this, because he understands better than anybody here, about how that's a variable operation, and the constraints that are in the field that change traffic operations. It's that simple. The result here, whether you're looking at it from a busy day assessment, or you're looking at it from a peak day assessment, the answer's the same, that it has nominal increase in peak hour traffic. Now, what that means is that peak hour traffic is defined in the evening time, on the summer busy mid-week day. And these are the numbers that are presented as, in parentheses, as percentages in the table to the right. And what that means is that there was, there's really, during that peak hour, very limited additional traffic increase on Highway 89 and the related intersections. That's a function of two things. The fact that this is not a high-generation project in terms of traffic. It's also representative of the amount of traffic that exists on Highway 89 North. So it's not as if that this is a contributing, is a hugely contributing additional trip, truck or vehicular trip generative project. The other piece I wanted to make sure that we all understand is that, and Kyle touched on it, is that, again, either on a busy day or a peak day, that there's no impact, that all of, no impact in terms of thresholds of significance, and that the traffic analysis looked at both this typical busy day and the peak day, and it concluded these things, that the adequacy of the intersections in the roadway continue to operate at a LOS or a Level of Service B. And that's well within acceptable levels for the county and all jurisdictions. And in either scenario, busy day or peak day, there's not a warrant for a left-turn lane or a right-turn lane. And that just is a matter of the traffic numbers that exist, and the contribution that this project's bringing. The other kind of, the factor to think about here is that the operation exists, or some of the cross-check piece of it, exists at Hobart. So that's the lower end, that's the two lower rows here, that talk about new average daily and new peak hour traffic. What that means is that that's the balance between what this project is creating and what already exists on the roads today, both because of the Hobart operation and the log storage operation that's been there for three years. And Kyle mentioned this too, feels like you mentioned everything, because he was so thorough, that what we also did was look at factors of X. And what does that mean? David, can you hear me? Yeah, something happened right there. That the factors of X means that in order to get to a left-turn lane warrant from 89 into the Klondike, you'd have to increase traffic, traffic generated by this project by a factor of five, meaning you'd have to times it by five before you even came close to requiring that left-turn mandate. Similarly, that you would have to multiply the traffic, the trip, the generation for this project by factors of 20, in order to get to either a level of service problem for either the intersection or the roadway, and a factor of 20 in order to get to a right-turn-in, right-turn-out warrant. So at the end of the day, the bigger message is that whether it's peak busy day or peak day, as we've presented and assessed the numbers, that there's not an impact relative to the county thresholds. Thanks, Kyle. I'm reading my mind. Noise, similarly, we also did a noise assessment based upon, again, the typical busy day, and also this peak day. Same result. There's not a significant impact relative to county standards in the day, either the evening or the night, and that entails the operation, and the truck traffic, and that combination thereof. It's a function of the existing noise, truly, that exists as a matter of proximity to Highway 89 North, and the topographic condition of the area, especially where the northerly areas are that are more confined within a valley. There's been a misnomer, and it's something that we want to correct, because it matters here, in that there are three modeling issues that we want to make sure that we touch on. That the noise modeling did, in fact, consider that the operation is going to be working with the two doors and its vents open. The numbers, the noise numbers that you're looking at all presume that both the input and output doors are open, and so are the vents. And it also is conservative, the assessments, both for busy day and peak day noise volumes, are conservative, in that there was not any insulation. It was a 20, 25-gauge steel metal building that was modeled for this, but in fact, and it would be fine to include this as a requirement or a condition of the project, that it's going to be insulated. It's going to be insulated by four inches of wall insulation, six inches of ceiling insulation. That's pretty fundamental in this climate for this kind of a project. It also, the modeling looked at, it did not consider evening traffic, or it did consider evening traffic for the proposed workday from 7:00 to 10:00. Those numbers are going to come down as, now we know that there's a requirement, and rightly so, that heavy traffic would be limited to 7:00 to 7:00. And that's an okay condition, that's something that's going to further bring down these numbers. When, once again, here, in looking at the average daily numbers and the peak numbers, it's not significant. And the same is true in terms of an impact, and relative to the thresholds of the county for impact. That even true, that's also true in terms of no impact for both the busiest and the busy day, as we've assessed. So next model, please, Kyle. And this is the result, this is just the overview of the modeling for both the evening and the day noise modeling. It's just illustrative in showing both the day and evening and what it means. This is specific to the project operation, and it shows the noise contours, and just make a couple of connections here, both for the evening and for the day, that what we're seeing is in plan, the green contours in the perimeter of the evening, for the evening and the day, are well within the max-allowed noise contours, or allowances for the county. There's also, and then the black numbers for the evening, it's the black square, the red box there, that talks about the 39 decibel average, and on the right, the day noise and the 43. Those are the peak average numbers at the closest receptor, which is at the entry location for the project site, and adjacent to the area, the housing to the right, or to the north, rather. So that's a complicated slide, and again, all of this stuff, we have our team to further drill down as and if necessary, after my presentation. So thanks, Kyle. I'm reading my mind again. Air quality. The air quality report assessed and analyzed everything. Everything, construction, the operational health, odor, greenhouse gas emissions, and the cumulative impact. It utilized all the state and federal models and standards. It was, it's comprehensive in looking at that and assessing it, and concluding, again, that there's not any significant impact relative to thresholds. The mitigation measures that are attached to this complement, and are in addition to the road and the site paving, the gravel log storage area, they're purposely are there for the sake of reducing dust. There's, and we're back to this theme of efficient and modern and innovative, in that the bioenergy heating and using the residuals, not residuals that are brought into the site to fire the boil, but the residuals that are used from the sawmill operation that are created in lumber and other wood product creation, that's what's used to fire the boiler and heat the buildings. So in that way, it's super efficient, it's super modern, and it's innovative that way. And collectively, between all those innovations, and the idea of reducing trips or VMT, because we have a centrally-located sawmill facility, and it's not having to travel to long distance to other maybe-open sawmill outlets, that the result is just, is both a greenhouse gas emission benefit and reduced reliance on fossil fuels. That totally aligns with goals for all of us, local, all the government entities and everything we're trying to achieve. That VMT reduction is a significant outcome of this project and this project location. And then, just quickly, it's conforming. At the end of the day, it conforms with all county and air quality management district guidelines. And when you're considering emission benefits, one thing that the analysis did not consider, which is, and which we saw this morning, and we didn't hope or ask for that, but there was some smoke here today in Truckee this morning, and it's not uncommon. But that's the emission problem, and that's the benefit with these kinds of projects at this location, that can help to reduce the threat of wildfire, be proactive in doing it, and get to reduced, net reduction in emissions that are created in wildfire events. So, and this is a, we have one, this is the single request that we have in terms of modification to any given mitigation measure or condition that have been recommended by the staff. And this was a late addition by the Northern Sierra Air Quality Management District in requiring the addition of this feature, or this device, that's known as a selective non-catalytic reduction device. And that for the purpose of getting to a Level A air quality threshold, which is the highest threshold relative to the district guidelines. That device isn't necessary. That device is extra and beyond the innovative and the modern-day technology that's built into the boiler. And when I'm talking about this, we're talking about NOx emissions specifically, and specifically with the boiler, in that the boiler comes and it's built in with a flue gas recirculation. And that the only thing that we're asking for here, in terms of a change to the mitigation measure, is just allowing us some flexibility in letting us, instead of a last-minute, hey, you need to add this device in order to make it work, which is not necessary to reach these Level A thresholds, give us a chance by giving us some flexibility within this mitigation measure to prove it. To go to the air quality management district, show them these built-in efficiencies within the boiler units, talk to them about how there are multiple boiler units, and not all of them are running all the time, which was the presumption in the analysis. And that there's also a factor of the type or the feedstock, the wood that's being utilized, and how that burns, and there's all kinds of other factors that go in to the analysis of the boiler and its NOx emissions, that we're really confident that even lacking this particular device, that we're going to get, and we will get, to a Level A threshold, because it already is very much close to Level A as it is. All we need to do is be able to speak to them at the permitting stage, in order to show, here's what it is, here's how it works, here's the numbers, here's the built-in efficiencies with this modern-day boiler that answers this and satisfies this Level A threshold. So I feel like I've been talking about two hours now. Next slide, please. Thank you again, Kyle. So I'm going to wrap it up. We think that the project is completely appropriate, relative to the general plan, its land use designation, and its policy direction. It's obviously, it's conforming, it has zero ask or request for any flexibility from any given standard. It has supporting SEQA review. It's fully mitigated, even with the change that I just talked about in terms of the air quality management districts. I'm not sure that there's another project that could say this, ever, that this is a project that addresses two community priorities, reducing wildlife threat and providing employee housing. Not just employee housing, but all of its employee housing, and its families. It's significant. I don't know about anybody else, but everybody knows the housing problem here, particularly in Truckee. It's significant. It's also, we think that the staff support is significant, and it comes from these same conclusions. The general plan, the zoning, the SEQA document, these priorities, it's the basis, it's, and they'll correct you if I'm wrong, but it's how we get to this stage with a positive staff recommendation. It's that assessment, it's doing the right things, it's bringing a project that's fully conforming and fully mitigated. And in my summary, the conclusion of my summary, would be that this project, it's necessary, it's beneficial, and it's appropriate. I'm hoping that answered your question, Chair, about where it came from, what it is, and with the overall theme of innovation and modern and sustainability. So we hope that you're going to use that general plan and that directive that it gives us all. And in looking at the conditions and the mitigation measure, all of them, there's a lot of them, that we're going to accept, and we understand, and we're going to be able to implement, with that one request for flexibility in mitigation measure 3C. And that there's a lot of other processes and protections that are coming our way, and that's the next steps, and that's what we want to get to, to drill down, improve, and meet all these conditions that are being recommended for this project. There's a set of findings for approval. I think the staff outlined them perfectly. Director Foss isn't here, but he appropriately, and we're completely in agreement and alignment with his conclusions, and saying that all of the findings for this project can be made in support of approval, and we hope and request that that's where you land today. So that's my summary, that's my presentation. There's a lot to cover. As I mentioned, all of our team is here, and whether Mr. David Mercer, myself, or our project team can answer any questions on whatever level, we're here, we're ready. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Gavin and Dave. How's everyone doing? Are you okay? Yeah? Okay, so at this particular point in time, I think what we will do is open up questions from the commissioners to either staff or the applicants. If that's something you'd prefer, or if you'd prefer to wait till after public comment, but if you have anything quick, I think now might be an appropriate time to get out ahead of some of those things. So that being said, let's go ahead and do that, and I would start with Commissioner Garst, being that this is your district.
Thank you. I just want to start by disclosing that I did visit this site on Monday with Supervisor Bullock, and Dave Mercer was also present for just a walk through the site. The biggest question I have is relation, the relation of this operation to the existing Hobart Mill operation. In the traffic analysis, it noted that the new peak, the new traffic created by this site, and some of that being offset by the reduction in the existing traffic. So I guess my- So I guess my question is, if we could get some clarification as to like the existing operation, how that will come offline, how this will replace existing operations, given that it's half a mile away?
So, right now, we operate out of Hobart Mills. We have a firewood yard there, store logs there, process them. And we also, when we can, ship logs to Quincy, or, which we haven't been able to do a lot over the last few years. So additional truck traffic that would have gone to Quincy with millable logs would then be going to Klondike, and the traffic that's going to Hobart would be going to Klondike because we would be moving out of Hobart.
For the current operations, do you have similar equipment as being proposed on this site? Is there a biomass boiler there?
No.
Okay. Well, how do the operations in the existing site compare to what's happening here?
So at Hobart Mills, we operate a firewood yard which processes non-merchantable logs, turns them into firewood. We also store our equipment there, service equipment there. So that's what currently goes on at Hobart. The new facility would have the firewood processing, be able to service our equipment at our shop, and then also process sawlogs taken from forest reduction work.
Great, thanks. For the clarification, I guess my other question was around the biomass boiler and the size of this. I think there's been a lot of concern that this is the, maybe confusion around the scale of that operation and this being a power plant versus being just onsite fuel production, and speaking to the size of that boiler, its capacity, and how it relates to the demand of this operation.
So the boilers are scaled to heat the sawmill building, shop building, the residential housing, and to heat the kilns. That's what they're sized to.
Is there, if the additional power is generated?
No, there's no electrical generation as part of the boilers. They're strictly heat. Electrical generation from boilers is a whole different ball of wax. Usually involves steam boilers, which these aren't. That's a whole different certification, and generally, it's not cost effective. It's cheaper to buy solar panels.
Great. Those are my main questions for now.
Thank you. Commissioner Duncan, anything?
My mic's off. The concerns about glue lamb production at the site, and I don't recall, are you going to be doing that specifically?
Yeah, the plan, if we can get that far, is to make a mass timber product. So as Gavin showed in that slide, mass timber is essentially taking low value lumber taken from small diameter trees, you cut the defect out of them, join them back in together, and then press them together. And it's, you can make beams, you can make panels, you can make all sorts of wood components out of those. So the, I think the, the fear of folks with the glue lamb portion of it is, back in the early days of glue lamb production, it was made with formaldehyde-based glues, glues that were toxic, glues that had a lot of offgassing and odor. Today's technology is not that. Today's technology, it uses basic industrial Elmer's wood glue. I've been to these facilities, there's no odor, there's no offgassing. I mean, everyone's got a tube of Elmer's glue in their garage, so it's, yeah, it's not that. And yes, hopefully we'll get to a point where we can do that because it is the best utilization for the type of wood that we generally harvest around here. It's going to be able to facilitate us to treat more acres.
Thank you.
And it's, yeah.
I think my main question for now is what, in your current facilities, and, and I guess in your future ones, is your relationship to the larger community? I understand that you're running a business, but is there also a component of people come by with, to get firewood or anything like that?
No, we generally deliver all the wood. We supply a majority of the other firewood resellers in Truckee with their wood. So that's, that's sort of the interaction currently with people. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, and I, then that's future as well, that would be the same.
As far as the firewood side of things, yeah.
Or just in general, like, I was looking for if there was, if you, in the neighborhood or in the area, are you the only one bringing logs to this, or?
No, we, well, currently or in the future?
Both.
Okay, so currently, at our facility that we have, either Hobart or the log storage that's at Klondike right now, that's, those are all logs that we generated. If it looks like we aren't generating enough, I have many other people that I work with that would be more than happy to bring logs into the mill. It's, it's a sort of, what the capacity of the mill is, is capped, so it's, there's not, there's not a lot of expansion. There's many components of the mill that essentially limit how much it can do. And the way it's designed was to meet pretty much what we do currently, plus a little more, because I think, you know, we can generally treat some more acres than what we do. And so that's how it's sized, and does that answer your question?
And so, it looks like the current design was designed for 50 years. Does that seem like there's anything else that would need to happen in 50 years in order to keep it?
No, I mean, as far as the way we operate right now, we, you know, we run machines for 20-plus years, we take great care of them, and we run them, and run them, and run them, and run them. And I don't look at this as anything more than an extension of what we already do. Essentially has an, you know, infinite life. I've been to facilities all over Europe that have been in the middle of small towns, and they've been running that way for 200 years with the same equipment. And the stuff that is equipping this facility is far more advanced than that, and is built to a really high quality and high standard. So, you know, the 50-year window, it was something to put in there because it was a question, and I don't really know how to, you know, I don't know that I'll be here in 50 years, but my children and grandchildren and their children possibly will continue on and keep doing what we're doing because it's going to take us quite a few hundred years to fix the mess we have.
I think that's good for right now. Thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner Mcateer.
Yes, I, I only have a merit badge in forestry, so I need a little more instruction on forestry practices, if possible, from my Boy Scout days. So I'm interested in, is this at all seasonal? You know, tell us, give me an understanding of, of the timber season and cutting season and milling season.
So typically here, in this region, we are able to get into the forest on a normal year, late May, early June. Once snow's gone, the ground has dried out enough, we can get in there. It's not typically the forest that's the problem, it's the road networks that are the problem. There's a lot of clay up here, the roads don't take driving on, and the roads haven't been rocked. So that's the real restriction, and then it's whenever it gets wet enough in the fall that we have to pull out of the forest. So that's typically November-ish.
Okay, so you've got a six-month operation of cutting?
Yeah, typically. I mean, there are seasons and locations where we can run in, you know, all year round. It just depends on where we're working and what the ground's like and what the access is like.
Okay, then talk about the milling operation then, and is there a seasonal aspect to it?
No, the mill is, is designed and configured to run year-round. So you bring logs in in the summer, debark them, sort them, stack them, consume a portion of it, and then have enough left by the time the inwood season is done, that you'd have enough material to process all winter. Because otherwise, it really doesn't make, you know, you're too, it doesn't make sense not to do it that way.
Okay, let's move to the finances on the project. It's intimated in, in the, in some writings and all, the state is involved in this project or financing, helping to finance. Can you discuss the financing involved in this project?
Yeah, so we have grants from CAL FIRE, and we have some grants from the US Forest Service that covered a portion of it, but a very, you know, minor portion of it.
And the rest of it's your private financing?
Yeah, we have some, yes, some USDA-backed loan mechanisms and some private investment.
Okay. And, and so if I'm a private logger here in the Tahoe Truckee Basin, and I've logged somebody's property, you know, they're going to build a house or whatever else, am I as, what are private loggers doing currently? Will they be able to come and sell to you? I know that Danny, Commissioner Milman, alluded to that, but if you could, if you could help me understand, because I'll just leave it at that.
So the way California forest practice rules work, every log that goes to a facility that comes off of anybody's land has to have some sort of permit to go with it. And so, yes, if there's wood that is permitted appropriately and has all the paperwork to go with it, then we would certainly be able to take that wood, if, you know, if our capacity warrants it.
Okay. So therefore, a private logger can come to you and say, gee, Mr. Mercer, I'd like to sell you my logs or whatever else, yes?
Yeah, if it's, if it's, it's not quite that simple as far as the paperwork end of it, but yes.
Okay, and so, when you produce the, you'll be producing, obviously, you know, two-by-four studs, and then you'll also be producing these laminated products. Are all these products shipped out of here, or do some, does Tahoe, do you sell to Tahoe Truckee Lumber or other, other entities?
Well, in a perfect world, we would sell it here. I mean, through TTL or through other locations, yeah. There's no reason to buy lumber from Canada and ship it here to sell it to people. I mean, the, the one thing that we don't have here is Douglas fir, which is what, you know, primarily people frame with.
Yeah.
But I think we can produce enough other products out of pine, which is predominantly what we cut, that we could certainly supply local markets, and that's really our goals. You know, it's why should you buy wood from another country when you could get it from next door?
Great. I also went up to the property today, and so I'm interested in, there's a heck of a lot of lumber up there, and it's not just small, you know, six-inch trees or so, it's a lot of large lumber. Can you just tell me, is, you, you not only do this small timbering, but you also do some large timbering, is that correct?
So the log decks that are at Klondike right now represent a couple of years' worth of work, and it depends on what kind of work we're doing. If we're doing like meadow restoration, which is where those bigger trees come from, so we're going into what would have been meadows, and since we haven't let fire in there for 100 years, lodgepole has grown and become 30-inch trees, but the 30-inch trees are only 100 years old. So those go away, trying to restore the meadows back to a more natural state. So there's a, yeah, there's a wide variety of diameters and species, and it's, it's not a constant thing, but predominantly, when we're doing a majority of our forestry work, it's cutting small trees.
And so finally, or I'm almost done, finally, your relationship with Tahoe National Forest, since they're the largest owner of property here, around here, do you, do you, do they contract with you? What's the relationship that you have with them, and how does, how does, how does that work out?
So there's two mechanisms that we work under when we're working on federal land here. There's contracts that are put out by the National Forest Foundation, which is a nonprofit that is a funding mechanism and helps the Forest Service operate. And then there's direct contracts with the Forest Service. So the Forest Service or the NFF will put out contracts to bid on, and they're open to any licensed and qualified timber operator to bid on. And if we're awarded those contracts, then we go and work on those contracts for them.
And then what, what percent of your work is for government landowners compared to private landowners?
Well, we work a lot for land trusts, for nature conservancy, for state parks, for the federal government, pretty much most of the large private landowners in the area. Government work to private land, I guess you could, I don't know, I'm not what you would consider the nature conservancy and the land trust as private or not. I guess they're NGOs, but.
Okay, yeah.
I would say probably 75% of our work is for either NGOs or government land, because they own a majority of the land. The remaining forest land around here is owned by SPI.
And, oh, yes, it is. And, and so my, the question related to that is, will Measure T funds be contracting with you to do, you know, removals within the fire protection district?
So the Measure T work, they just came out this summer with some of their first contracts. We bid on a few of them, they didn't go to us, some other people were under us, but, you know, that's, we'll bid along with everyone else for work as far as the forestry end of it goes.
So if I can't get my lumber to you, obviously, you're saying to a private guy who's timbering a piece of property, sorry, and the only game in town is Lincoln or Quincy, is that correct?
No, the only game in town for someone who's doing like a three-acre conversion, which would be, say, for a house lot, you'd have to file for a three-acre conversion and then have a licensed timber operator with an A license come and do the work for you, and then that A-licensed operator could resell the wood.
But, but, but that wood is going out of Nevada County. It's going to either Quincy or Lincoln for milling, or?
Right now, I would say a majority of it's going to the dump.
The dump. Thank you. Now, I've been to the SPI mill in Lincoln, and I don't know how many linear feet, you say that you're going to be producing four, if I remember correctly, four million board feet a year. What, what would, what is a mill like that producing, which I would call a real, you know, full-scale mill?
So, and board feet, I don't know what Lincoln does, but I know how many truck loads Lincoln does. So Lincoln and Quincy both do, well, Anderson as well, they do about 400 loads per day of logs.
And yours, again, is?
Somewhere around 10.
Okay.
Just for reference.
Are all those logs on your property, are they valueless at this point because they've
Yes, well, yes and no. Some of it's great for firewood, some of it's still got some potential to be milled, and some of it's going to need to go through a chipper.
Thank you very much.
Don't sit down, Dave.
Well, I think you might have a question for somebody else.
You're doing so well. I just have a quick one before we move on here. Employee housing, that element of the project, if you could just kind of explain that, as far as, will it be all the employees, some of the employees? What is the, what is the thought process and the purpose behind housing employees on-site?
So, no, I can't house all my employees, but I think I can house, hopefully, enough employees. And the thought process is, you know, anyone who lives here knows how screwed up housing is here. I have employees living in my mom's house because that was the best I could do for them. I have employees struggling to pay for housing here with their families, employees living in Reno that would much rather live here because they can't find housing here. That's the reality of what we've made this place.
So you feel that the, the housing aspect of this project is, is basically a added employee benefit to some of the employees, and do you have enough, or, I mean, will you fill it? Is it?
Oh, it'll definitely get filled, yeah.
And, I mean, I guess it really doesn't matter, but just for my curiosity's sake, will the employees be provided the housing, or are they paying some type of rent back to the company, or how is, how are you going to work that?
I think I'm going to try and give it to them as best I can. I mean, that's the reality of it. It's, yeah, it's going to be supplemented, and, yeah, I mean, everyone's got to pay a little bit of something for something, but I'm certainly, they're not going to be paying market rates for anything. It just isn't feasible.
Thank you. You could sit down now. Okay, folks, let's, let's try to do some coordination here. It's 3:30, and we're going to be taking a short 10-minute break in a little bit, a couple minutes here. Obviously, there's a lot of folks here, a lot of members of the community are here, I would assume, to speak on this particular issue. It's been noted before that we've received over four- It's been noted before that we've received over 400 comment letters, totaling 700 and some pages. And I can tell you that the commissioners have reviewed and read not only those letters, but also the, the emails we've received personally to each of us. So that being said, in an effort to expedite and hopefully, hopefully get to some type of conclusion today, I'd like to ask the folks here, and just by a show of hands, how many of you folks that are here today have submitted letters and comments on the project? Okay, I would say that's a pretty fair majority. And, and that being noted, I would ask that maybe, hopefully, during our 10-minute break here, you guys could kind of get together and converse amongst yourselves as to what's most important for us to hear above and beyond what we've already read and dealt, dealt with. What I would like to see today is us wrapping this up. If we can't wrap it up today, or don't, what we're looking at is continuing this meeting at another date, which will be sometime in September. So that being said, hopefully, we could get through this process. I think that because of the travel aspect of us coming up here, the time of day and everything else, that I would anticipate us scheduling the rest of today as this. We will take a short 10-minute break. We will come back and we will start the public hearing portion of this project, of this agenda item. That's probably going to be sometime 3:45. We will then go to about 5 o'clock and take a break for dinner. Short 30 minutes. Then we will reconvene here at 5:30, somewhere in there. I'll get more specific as we get into it. And I would really like to see us either have a hard stop on comments at that time so we can deliberate and get this wrapped up by 7:00 PM. Or if we continue with public comment, one way or the other, we need to end today's session at 7:00 PM. I think for the health and safety of us up here and everyone involved, staff who had to travel today, which means we could get home in daylight hours. I just don't like driving at night anymore. I can't do it. So, that being said, we'll play it by ear, we'll see how it goes. If we can have comment wrapped up at 5:00 or before we take a dinner break, that'd be great. I think then we would come to a conclusion today for sure by 7:00. If not, we're looking at continuing the meeting into another date in September, which will be a firm date we will set here before we leave. So that being said, we're going to take a short 10-minute break at this time. It's 3:35 or so. Let's plan on reconvening here at 3:45.
Okay, folks. We are ready to open the public hearing on this item. What I will ask is that, here's how the public comment period works. You're going to come up to the podium, you're going to state your name and address, and each individual that's speaking has three minutes. There's a clock here on the corner of the dais, if you can see it. The microphone will go dead after three minutes and we'll ask you to stop as a courtesy to your neighbors and us. If there's anyone here that's representing a group or an organization, please state that when you give us your name and the organization you're representing, and I will more than likely allow you five minutes to speak. So I would also ask that you probably line up here along this wall in groups of five or six, no more, and then just keep filling the lineup, keep five or six people in the queue, and we'll get going. So if we're ready to start, let's open up the public hearing.
Hi, is this on? Yep. My name is Ellie Olano. I represent the United States Forest Service, so I don't know if I'll need a full five minutes, but I work for the headquarters office in Washington DC, previously worked here on the Tahoe National Forest as forest supervisor. So the US Forest Service currently does not have an official position on this specific proposal and decision in front of you today. The Forest Service does not typically provide official positions on local discretionary decision-making. I'm here to provide a general overview of the role wood utilization facilities play in the accomplishment of the Forest Service mission. In 2022, the Secretaries of Agriculture and the Interior announced a 10-year strategy to address the wildfire crisis across the Western US. Major part of that strategy is doing forest treatments to reduce the threat of large-scale destructive wildfire. The Forest Service designs projects to improve forest health and reduce the risk of wildfire to communities like this one. These projects have proven to be effective in changing fire behavior and lead to a more sustainable, resilient forest. These projects are more effective and more efficient if wood material produced from the projects can be utilized. Wood utilization facilities, including timber mills, help accomplish this work in a number of ways. They help implement the work of the forest, they help remove woody material that is hazardous fuel from the forest, and they help decrease the cost of these treatments by producing an economic product or service. When the wood and/or hazardous fuels in the forest can be utilized, for example, by a mill, the cost of the project is lower per acre, thus more acres can be accomplished. Many mills have closed across the Western United States over the past few years and even just in the past few months. In central Oregon, Malheur Lumber announced its closure two weeks ago. When these utilization facilities close in these communities, it increases the cost of important forest restoration and community protection projects. In some places, it renders those projects infeasible, and they are not accomplished. Prescribed fire is another important approach to implementing forest restoration and fuels projects, but it is not a viable, safe approach across all the acres needing treatment. In order to address the wildfire crisis, we need all of the forest management tools available to us, and that includes removing wood material and hazardous fuels from the forest to facilities like sawmills and other types of utilization facilities. Finally, the project proponents have been important partners with the Forest Service in accomplishing forest restoration and fuels reduction work throughout the greater Truckee area in recent years. They've been responsible operators and sensitive to environmental concerns. I'm happy to answer any questions you all might have.
Thank you, Ellie.
Good afternoon. I appreciate the opportunity to talk. My name is Scott Lindgren. I'm the Fire Chief for Tahoe Douglas Fire Protection District on the Nevada side of the lake. I'm representing the Lake Tahoe Regional Fire Chiefs Association, which is 25 different agencies that are within and surrounding the Lake Tahoe Basin. I'm also the chairman of the Tahoe Fire and Fuels Team of the MAC that oversees that team. I'm here today to show support for the project with those groups. We support it. Just the simple fact is, we need to do more fuels reduction. We're surrounded by an unhealthy forest. We don't have a place to take the products. And when we don't have a place to take the products and the products aren't marketable, we don't get the fuels reduction done that we need to get done. It's just super important to have something closed. The prices and the cost of haul logs and haul materials to the dump or to other areas is just astounding, and we just need some local places that we can take it so that we can make the forest healthier and we can protect our communities. It's just as simple as that for the fire department and agencies that I represent. Thank you.
Chief, I have one question to clarify, because I asked it before, and the gentleman, Mr. Mercer, said the people take the logs to the dump. And so could you clarify, I mean, what does that mean? What happens at the dump?
They get buried, yeah.
Really?
Yeah, they do. So a lot of our logs up here are just, they're unmarketable because of the species and the type, and to haul them to the big mills, it's just un-cost-effective. And so the prices of hauling that, especially if it's a small project, like you brought up, a three-acre piece that's putting a house side in, there's no skin in that. They don't want to do that. So we have a project going on the north side of the lake sponsored by Envy Energy, similar to what, you know, and they did some of that work up in the Truckee because they supply some power up here, and they had logging companies bid from all over the United States, and VM West, which is a logging company from Colorado, got one of the bids. They have to haul their logs to Oregon, Oregon. And so there's no profit in that. So Envy Energy and the taxpayer and the ratepayer has to pay all that money to haul this wood out of here, because it's not like, oh, I've got a load of logs like the old days, and the mills want it, and they're going to buy it. It's just not like that anymore. We need a place to take the wood, and not just the wood, but the product, the brush and everything else. We chip, you know, we do different things with it. You know, firewood's a great thing, but you can only do so much with that. We're stacking wood up, which is actually not productive for what we're trying to do with fuel breaks, because then we have these massive piles of wood that, as they dry out and then they're not marketable anymore, they're huge, huge jackpots of fuel that can cause massive problems if we get a wildland fire. So we got to get ahead of this. I heard a comment that we're 100 years behind on this. It's reality. You know, we don't want to see clear cuts. We don't want to destroy the forest. We want a healthy forest again. We want to protect our communities, but the only way that we can do that is doing the fuels reduction and the thinning of the projects, but in order to do that, you got to have a place to take it. And if you got to take it too far away, it's just not productive. So that's our problem.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Afternoon, council. Thanks for your service. You guys are superstars. I'm Darren Buehler. I live in Floriston. I've lived in Floriston all my life. I'm the Firewise rep for the Firewise Community of Floriston. I'm also the stakeholder coordinator for the newly forming Eastern Regional Firewise Coalition, Coalition of Firewise Communities on the east side. And we currently are rallying fire resiliency efforts through the NFPA standard of Firewise, and it's adopted by individual communities as it fits their needs. And that represents an effort, a necessary effort of defense, fire resiliency defense in the short term, which is something we need to do, but for the long term, we really need to develop a fire-adapted culture that has a different relationship with the landscape that we live in. And that culture, to do that, we're going to need an economic component, and economic components to support that. And Alpenglow Timber is a beautiful example of an economic component that can foster that fire-adapted community moving forward. And so I just, I hope that you'll support it, and it's a good thing. Thanks.
Thank you, Darren.
I'm Herbert Spencer. I have a PhD in physics. I've done work for EPA, also been a consultant for the UN in air pollution control, and I have done work in fire hazard mitigations and fire studies. I've been an expert witness on a multimillion-dollar lawsuit that involved a spontaneous combustion fire. I am also a co-chair of a Firewise community, and I'm also a trustee of property on Klondike Flat Road that basically covers a quarter of the distance that's going to be the trucks moving on Klondike Flat Road. I have concerns about this project, particularly in that sawmills are a significant initiation source. We've had major fires in sawmills in California, and I know their fire mitigation plans, but I believe it is enough of a potential impact that an environmental impact report should be generated for this project and complete study done on the fire mitigation of it. I was very pleased to hear they're planning to use non-VLC glues, and so that there will not be the hazardous materials that would be involved in glues being present. I've submitted MSD sheets for those glues, and they would present a significant risk and a potential fire hazard and require special handling by the Truckee Fire Department and the Cal Fire Department. So that is a significant improvement in this project. One thing that I did not see presented is that they're going to be burning wood. Word generates ash. A warehouser MSD sheet on that ash shows that it is a toxic material, needs to be handled properly, stored properly, disposed of properly. It can actually be a soil amendment if it's handled properly, but I saw no discussion in any of the planning with respect to what's going to be done with that ash. Again, another environmental impact significant, and it needs to be addressed, could also require an environmental impact report to address that. Other issues that we have, obviously, the noise is a major concern. I would like to know why second all-weather access road is not being provided for this project. There's significant risk of getting, even the ploys at this project, the owner of the project, if you get a fire there, you need to be able to get fire services in there, whether independent. If Klondike Flat's broken or clogged up for whatever reason, there needs to be another second exit into this project. Another concern, real quick, snow burns on Highway 89 could be a problem, and I'm also concerned with the, we're talking about a truck every six minutes on Klondike Flat Road in certain hours.
Thank you, Herbert.
If you all have any questions before me, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Stephanie McIntosh. My family and I live on Brookstone Drive in Tahoe Donner. I guess what I want to say is that we have known, we have lived here for 25 years. We've known Dave Mercer for 23 years. I don't know anyone who cares more about this community than Dave Mercer. As you saw, he's deeply rooted for generations. Professionally, we have worked with him for several years in cross-check. They are always a pleasure to work with, very open to listening and ideas, very professional and empathetic when we've dealt with problems with, he's helped us when trees have fallen on houses during last winter, and we really appreciate being able to work with them. Personally, we live in the northeast corner of Tahoe Donner. We're worried about wildfire, especially on that north side. We appreciate the mitigation factors of this project, and we welcome them. And last, we also think that this project would be great for a business in Truckee. This is the type of business that Truckee wants, the type of business we need. It aligns with the type of jobs that our tradesmen would like long-term, and of course, we appreciate the employee housing. So last, I just want to say I do understand that this project is of concern to a lot of my community members, and we would like for everyone to work together to find a solution, and I really think Dave would be open to doing that. Thank you.
Thanks, Stephanie.
Hello, my name's Michael. I am president of the HOA of Klondike Flat. I am basically a 25, 30-year resident of Klondike Flat. I just have a few points that haven't been brought out that I'll bring up. Highway 89 in Klondike Flat is an extremely difficult left turn. You can try it yourself if you go up there. I'd say 95% of the time you're trying to turn left, someone is passing you on the left, and it's a very dangerous situation, and something's going to happen. I don't know what the answer is. People slow down, maybe more dotted lines, more solid line. The other thing, Alder Creek and 89 is another dangerous intersection. It's a two-way stop coming out of Tahoe Donner and Prosser Lakeview. I know, by living here, there's been two fatalities at that corner, and I don't know how you saw that either, just people drive too fast. The other thing, you mentioned flooding at the bottom of Klondike Flat. As president, I have never heard of any flooding at the end of Klondike Flat. There's, to me, that's news, new news. The other thing, the residents of Klondike Flat were mentioned that they're not compatible to the county. We are compatible with the county. That residential area was built in the 60s, 70s. My house was built in 81, and I'm sure at that time, there was compliance with whatever Nevada County required. So we are in compliance, we're just not complying, we're just not there. The other thing I have is where the water is going to come from for this domestic well or fire protection well. Everyone on Klondike Flat is on their own well, and my concern is that this industrial project might threaten our water source. It has threatened. I used to work for the Water District in Truckee Donner, and there was a, when Gray's Crossing went in, Old Greenwood went in, they have a well in between there and the freeway area. I think it's known as Ponderoso Rancho. It's kind of right next to Prosser Lakeview. Those individuals had problems with their water when that development went in. Their wells went dry. So my concern is pumping the water in that area. It's going to come, is it going to affect our wells? I don't know until this is done. The other thing is septic. For a project this size, what kind of septic is in plan? I haven't heard anything about it. My understanding with the county that they don't want any more septic anywhere, and that's understandable. I have just a couple of seconds. The other thing is the wildlife in the area. Being a full-time resident there, I see a lot of deer, birds. There's a bald eagle that nests across Prosser Lake. There's also an historical picnic area a mile away south of the project.
Thank you, Michael. We need to wrap it up.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Dave Hoffman. I'm a resident of Kings Beach, California, and I'm going to wear a couple hats today. I'm also the Director of Operations and Maintenance over at Truckee Airport, and under my umbrella is the fuels reduction, forest management. And I want to speak to cross-check and the integrity of their work, the quality and the professionalism that I have experienced, the district has experienced with working with cross-check, and I would see that following to this mill project as being top-notch. And again, now on my personal side, as a resident, I'd like to say, reiterate that this is a much-needed project for our community for the reasons that have been touched upon time and time, which is fuels reduction, fire safety, health of our forests, and things of that nature. So that's all I've got to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dave.
Yes, my name is Jim Eskman, and I live at 10517 Snowshoe Circle in Prosser Lakeview. And first, I would like to state that I support the revitalization of the timber industry, much needed, as we all know. Having said that, I'd like to comment on the proposed plant at Klondike Flat. This location, to me, poses some significant traffic and safety hazards. At this location, you will have heavily laden trucks entering and leaving a section of Highway 89 at the bottom of the Prosser Creek drainage. Probably many of you know exactly where I'm talking about. This means there's a hill coming from both directions that the trucks will have to slow to a crawl to exit the highway. Upon entering the highway, they will be going precariously slow while they accelerate up the hill. These actions will be detrimental to the flow of traffic on the highway. All types of traffic uses, of course, plenty of cars and also RVs on their way to Jackson Meadows Reservoir and other points north, going and coming, and they're all going at freeway speeds. A real concern of mine also are the hay and cattle haulers. Neither of these operations are capable of slowing rapidly to allow a slow-moving truck to enter or cross the highway. There will most probably be some accidents because of these actions with perhaps injury or worse as a result of this. Closer to home, I'm concerned about the traffic situation at the top of the hill where Rainbow Drive intersects 89 North. It is already difficult to join the flow of traffic on most days. This section of 89 North has limited sightlines and is difficult to estimate the speed of traffic. This is also a school bus route, as is Alder Creek, where a slowing school bus is exposed to speeding traffic. Let's not forget that these heavily laden trucks will be traversing a school crossing at East Alder Creek. I would suggest that a comprehensive traffic survey be done at East Alter, Rainbow, and Alder Creek, one that can be reviewed and commented upon. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Jim.
Hey, everyone. My name is Mark Hermsmeyer. I'm another Prosser Lakeview resident. 15 years ago, I moved here from Southern California to get away from the congestion and the chaos. I started a mountain bike footwear and apparel company in 2018, and I'm not hearing anyone here talk about the immigrant Hobart Mills trailhead and the mountain biking that occurs down in that zone. Already very dangerous. The other thing is Prosser Creek drainage, like that gentleman said, gorgeous zone. We can do better. There are other ways to make money, and this isn't one of them. Move it up the road, figure it out, you can do better. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Folks, please, we'd ask that, we don't have any disruptions, applause, or anything. Thanks.
My name is Heidi Rothery, and I'm a public school teacher. I teach at Alder Creek Middle School, and I'm proud to do so. I teach at Alder Creek Middle School and I'm proud to do so. My school site is two miles from this project. I have grave concerns about the impact on our community. This is our community. This is where we live. We are all borrowing it. We all have a responsibility to give it back better than we found it. None of us own this. This is not ours to keep and decide what the future looks like. I don't think any of us here could live in this community without being worried about fire, safety and the threat of wildfires. We would be absolutely idiots to think it wasn't going to affect us at some point. However, this is not the site. It was mentioned, it's not Tahoe Donner. Well, guess what? Tahoe Donner is two and a half miles away. You have 7,400 homes. This is impacting. If it's not a threat, I don't know, build it in Olympic Valley. There's that to consider. If it's not going to impact home values, build it in Olympic Valley. I have the pleasure of being here with former students and I'm a former coach and my athletes are in this room. It's my responsibility to be here to fight for them and the communities where they live, their neighborhoods. You have teenage drivers getting to school. I drive that route, State Route 89 twice a day. I understand the impact of what six more trucks would do on that stretch, winter, summer, fall, spring. I have athletes that are running in that air, less than two miles away. This is California. We pay attention to our environment and we want to leave it better. So we look at all these communities. So you're telling me that the people in Russell Valley, Prosser Estates, all the students, 500 to 600 students a year, aren't going to be impacted by this? We have that roundabout right at Alder Drive. We've already had students hit at that roundabout. We have students walking to school, riding their bikes to school. If we don't care for them, who will? They are the future generation. If it's not a threat, build it someplace else. This is not the place for it. We have mountain bike trails, we have watersheds, we have wildlife that are endangered in that area and our students should matter.
Thank you.
Thank you, Planning Commission, for being here. My name is Jim Dill and I'm a resident of Juniper Hill, which is a fire-wise community. You know, we could have built a church on this property and all prayed for no wildfires, right? But I'm a big proponent of Dave Mercer. And I came to Olympic Valley Ski Racing when I was 17 years old in 1978. I believe Dave was about four years old. And I've become a huge fan. He's one of the most solid, most honest, most fair individuals that I know. He took a liking to machinery and snow cats and trams and, you know, high-tech machinery when he was a young boy and flying helicopters. And he's good at it. He's really good at running this stuff. And I would say, and I wouldn't say this for a lot of my friends from Olympic Valley, but I would trust Dave with my life. He's dedicated and hardworking and his cross-check company has done nothing but good for our community. I have really educated myself a lot over the last months and have learned a lot about, a lot with registered foresters that have helped me to learn about forestry management. And our forest is overgrown in a big, big way. And the threat of wildfire is on everybody's mind all the time, every day, 24/7. I'm a big-picture thinker. I see a lot of the comments on the negative aspect of this project as being small things, really small things. Small things that if this whole place goes up in flames and we get torched, those small things are going to be meaningless, absolutely meaningless. And I will say as a secondary note, other than the wildfire protection and the wildfire advantages and things that Dave's company and by having this mill and taking on what I would call the intermediate logs, right? In-between, the logs that Sierra Pacific Industries won't take. Not only is that an economic benefit, but really it reduces our wildfire risk and makes for a healthier forest. But also wildlife. Since 2012, and 2012 and state of California had about 25,000 black bears. Right now, we have about 65,000 black bears. And our deer population in the mountains is struggling because of overgrowth of the forest and lack of food for the deer on the ground level. So most of our deer have pushed, the migratory routes have changed, the mule deer aren't coming to the west, and most of our deer in the mountains have pushed down to the valley. So wildlife is a big issue with this too. And so I'm a big proponent and a big supporter of Alpen Glow Timber. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Hi, I'm Joanne Rubik. I'm a Nevada County resident here in Truckee. And for a little over 30 years, I was a district ranger for the U.S. Forest Service here in Truckee. And became painfully aware in the last 20 or so years that our ability to handle wood coming out of the forest was dropping off while our threat of increasingly dangerous large wildfires was on the rise. We, as a community, Northern California, if you will, have a problem to solve and it's a big one. I think staff and the proponent have made a really good effort at explaining the problem, so I won't try to do that for you. When I heard about this, actually, let me tell you a little caveat. Even though I worked for the Forest Service, don't anymore, and I'm not representing them, I also am now working with the Truckee River Watershed Council on their board and I'm not representing them. This is my view today. When I heard that Dave Mercer was the person proposing a project like this, I was actually pretty pleased. Dave contracted with the U.S. Forest Service on numerous projects over the years. And in my observation, I don't remember very many folks that were doing work in the woods that were as professional, as progressive, as interested in ending up with a good result for the environment when he was done. And knowing that he's the person proposing this, it's my belief that it will be well-done if it's approved. I understand that some of the neighbors are worried and I actually can empathize with that. I know that when somebody proposes something new and big in your neighborhood, it is always alarming. I think there are ways to work through that. But I would like to end this by saying, if this is approved, it's my hope that this facility is the first of many because we need many of these facilities around Northern California. And I hope that this is a good example and it's copied by communities all over the northern part of the state. It offers us a great opportunity to create a healthier and more resilient forest that we really need if we're going to get out ahead of the fire problems that we know we all face. I would like to ask a question of you as you're pondering this this afternoon. If we're not going to do this now, when are we going to do it? If it's not David Mercer, then who's going to do it? And if it's not on his property, then where? And by the way, does any of us, do any of us know how much time we have before it will become an issue we should have considered yesterday? Thank you.
Thanks, Joanne.
Hi, I'm Lindsay. I live in Prosser, right on Rainbow, the very first house. We have a great view of 89. We bought our first house two years ago. We have a one-year-old daughter. Just since we moved in, the truck traffic alone has increased, the sound pollution has increased. I don't, was it 2021 or '22 when these studies or whatever was done? I think it's already outdated. So these six extra trucks a day, whatever those numbers were, it's already too many. And this is not just an issue with this project, but I think 89 as a whole, I believe it was Jim, who brought up every point I was going to bring up. That turnout is already very dangerous on Rainbow, on Alder. I can't imagine what it's like getting into Klondike Flat already. So those are just already some of my concerns. I will have to say that after learning some more of the specifics, I wouldn't say I'm in favor of it, but I'm glad to hear about the glue and, you know, all these other sound issues that were some of my other concerns. I do think we need, I have a degree in wildlife biology and conservation biology and so I'm aware of the forest and the forest health and we are in a crisis and we do need to do a lot to get our forest healthy again. So I'm not, I want to say opposed to this project, but I don't necessarily think this is the spot. And if it is going to be the spot, then I think sort of as a good faith, I would say, sort of thing is maybe, even though you don't have to put in turning lanes or do certain things that maybe if you are a part of this community that you would do them or would want to do them to make it safer. We take our daughter on our bikes and we have gotten almost hit so many times crossing 89 to get to Alder when we show our daughter, here's going to be where you're going to go to school in four years or however many years. So I can just imagine having those extra trucks with those logs. It's going to just be even more dangerous. And also, I'm a little, I don't want to say confused, but I feel like there should be something in place. We talked about Truckee Lumber, like why don't you have already maybe a contract or something with them? So you are selling locally and not adding more emissions, selling these, this wood products to other places. You know, I think that should be something that's in the plan. I think that's it. I'm sure forgetting something, but I got rid of my sheet so I could just talk to you from the heart. So thank you.
Thanks, Lindsay.
Hello. I want to thank you for your time and everybody's effort here. My name is Missy Bruner-Moller. I'm also born and raised in the area and I'm also a steward at the environment. I'm executive director of an organization called Sierra Watershed Education Partnerships. And so much of the teaching of what I do is about forest health, defensible space. Many of my partners in resources are right here in this room. So I wear that hat. And with that hat, I understand the importance of this project and what it would do for our forests. But I'm also a resident of Russell Valley. And so with that hat on, I know the true threat that is posed with the amount of trucks that we have coming in and out of Hobart Mills. And I understand that that might just move to Klondike, but what I'm concerned about is more trucks. And a few people have mentioned, and I just want you to really pay attention to this because we drive it regularly, is the Alder Creek entrance. It's right at a part of the hill of 89 that when you're going, when the trucks are coming north and you're exiting south, that turn particularly, that's where the trucks do spin out and particularly bigger vehicles. So there is a, I think of it every time I drive, it's just like I gear myself up and think about an exit plan and what's going to be the best when whatever vehicle loses control right there. And that's not to count the crossing, which is very much an issue at Hobart Mills as well. And there has been an increase of truck traffic and that's a big concern of mine. Also, as a scientist and a background in conservation education, I understand what impact this might have on the environment, on the air of which we breathe and where that's blown. And so what I want to ask of all of you, of Kyle, of David, of Gavin, of everybody involved in this and of you and your responsibility, is can you go further than the CEQA? Is there a possibility of an EIR? Are there some more tests that can be done that can help those residents that will be driving through and be impacted directly? Because I truly understand the benefits of this and I understand that I'm just going, but not in my backyard, okay? I get it. I work with so much around forest health. I understand the need for it and the value. I also believe that David is very careful in what he does and I respect that. I just want to say, I'm concerned as a local that drives through there regularly. I'm concerned by the peace and beauty that I have in Russell Valley that I want secure.
Thank you, Missy.
Good afternoon. My name is Mike Rothery. I've been in the area since '86. And we've been in the room now for roughly three hours, seeing slides, listening to a lot of testimonials regarding wildfire reduction. I think all of that's great, but what we haven't heard much about are the 20-plus saw mills that have caught on fire in the last year and a half. We haven't heard much about this proposed location being 4.1 miles from Russell Valley, 1.4 miles from Lakeside Campground, two miles from Prosser Estates and the 500 homes there, two miles from Alder Creek Campground, 3.8 miles from Tahoe Donner Adventure Center, and two and a half to four and a half miles from the 6,500 homes in Tahoe Donner, or 3.3 miles from the 377 homes in Gray's Crossing, three miles from Prosser Lake, three and a half miles from Alder Creek Middle School and the rec center. All of this within a five-mile radius. We haven't talked about the young kids at soccer practice at the middle school. We haven't talked about the family going out to sit on their decks Saturday morning, two miles away as a crow flies from the site. We haven't talked about very much the mountain bikers, the hikers, the fishermen, the campers, all of which don't want to be sucking on 7,500 metric tons of CO2 put out by this place. Now, forest reduction or wildfire reduction is great. This location is not. I don't know what other locations have been considered, but my question would be if none, why not? And what's the rationale for building such a plant? And this isn't even getting into the glue lamp factory. Now, Elmer's glue, I have a hard time believing that it's no more toxic than a little bit of Elmer's glue. And the fact that we aren't doing or a environmental impact report hasn't been done for all of this seems absurd to me. It just is, doesn't make any sense. So unless you can 100% guarantee that this project won't have an impact on our health or environment, potential fire hazard of starting a fire and easily spreading within five miles to any of these structures, I would highly recommend and ask you to consider opposing this and delaying it and doing more research on it. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Hello, my name is Danielle Bradfield. I am not a resident of Truckee. I'm actually a resident of Quincy and we have the SPI Mill in Quincy, so I have a slightly different perspective here to clearly voice my concern for the project. I am a registered professional forester and I've been fortunate enough to have worked with cross-check services for about the past 17 years. The way I see this, Truckee has a really unique opportunity to be proactive by approving an innovative facility that's proposed by a local business instead of a corporation. I'm not trying to minimize the concerns that have been raised, but the plain truth is these issues can be mitigated. We cannot effectively mitigate the effects of catastrophic wildfire. Since composing my letter of support, both the Gold Complex and the Park Fire have started. So I'll keep this really quick. What Gavin said about the maybe available mill is a very real situation. Have you worked in the Truckee Basin for roughly the last 17 to 20 years? I now have 968 acres of fuel reduction in the Truckee Basin, leading from Truckee going up to Soda Springs. Now the logs have no home. The mills are full of fire salvage that's anticipated to come off the park fire. Anytime you have the industrial timberlands burn, it's a hard fact. And getting to what Joanne Rubik was mentioning earlier, this facility is part of a solution. And it may not seem ideal to some of you, but it's a very real situation that we have to address. At this point, the 968 acres, those are all situated wholly within the wild and urban interface of Truckee. And I can't implement at this point. I have no home for those logs to go. In fact, in the last five years for the project... to go. In fact, in the last five years for the projects that I have done within Truckee that have been immediately adjacent to communities within Truckee, those logs have gone to the site that's on the board. So I'm very thankful for the opportunity that I was able to implement those projects. All the logs have gone to that facility. I really urge the various entities here to come to a consensus and help move this project forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle.
Hello, my name is Kim Sype, and I am the managing director of Science and Research at Blue Forest, who I am here representing today in support of the project. I'm also a local Truckee resident, and I was also born and raised here. Forest, who I represent here today, is a conservation finance nonprofit, and our mission is to accelerate the pace and scale of forest management across the Western US. Blue Forest is committed to being part of this solution by supporting both forest management and associated wood product solutions. We have a science team who's made up of foresters, hydrologists, ecologists, biodiversity experts, and carbon scientists. And part of our goal is to do research of understanding how we can actually steward our forests against disturbances like wildfire and drought. In 2023, our scientists, along with a team of researchers at UC Berkeley, published a peer-reviewed study in the Forest Products Journal, which found that stimulating investments into local markets for low-value wood products is a requirement for California to achieve its forest restoration goals and to achieve our carbon-related climate goals. Therefore, businesses like Alpenglow Timber, which are local and co-located, provide a practical outlet to take low-value wood and create economic demand which can help defray the cost of restoration. At Blue Forest, we've seen firsthand in the Tahoe region how forest restoration has continued to be delayed due to a lack of funding at state and federal levels, plus a lack of forest products infrastructure in the region. The planned Alpenglow Timber facility is specifically designed to process these low-value logs, which are also small, and in fact, is designed for this community. It will be one of the very smallest sawmills in all of Truckee. And as many others had said, we hope that this can be a model that can propagate throughout our region and our state. As also many others has mentioned, this is truly an opportunity for us as a community to prioritize our goals around wildfire risk reduction and the use of this low-value wood, which has nowhere to go. Another point that we wanted to clearly make is that this project has support from CAL FIRE, as well as the US Forest Service, through some of their grants, which just demonstrates how this project also can help us meet state and local goals. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kim.
How are you guys doing? My name's Sky King. I own the 14 acres adjacent to this property. Been a resident of Klondike Flat seven years now. So I'd just like to bring up the fact, you guys are kind of, or Dave and his team, I've been talking about how we're a non-conforming community. So I worked extensively with the planning department after I bought my parcel. We sat down, you guys had a stack about two inches thick of this location, and you guys actually approved a residential subdevelopment in the '60s. The only reason that it's not on the books to this day is because it wasn't recorded. So that's the only reason that there's homes in the Klondike Flat neighborhood. So 80 years later, you guys proposing and allowing, or potentially allowing, an industrial mill is kind of outrageous when 80 years ago, you guys created a residential neighborhood. So I'm going to leave it at that, but you guys are trying to build an industrial complex in a community. It's kind of ridiculous.
Thanks, Sky.
Hello, my name is Alyssa Morganti. I'm a 28-year resident of the Tahoe Truckee area. I have a master's degree in environmental policy. I'm a local tradesperson. And as I look around, I have a lot of friends that live in Russell Valley, Klondike Flat, Tahoe Donner, and Prosser Lakeview, sitting here in this room. And I would attest to any of their character and their concern for all of the issues that we face here in this rural area that we choose to live in. It's a choice to live in these rural areas so that we don't have to deal with air pollution, noise pollution, traffic hazards, really closely located, right out our front door. This, although this isn't really a question of anyone's character, seems to be coming up a lot, so I thought I would bring that up. Everyone here is raising their families. They're choosing to recreate. People who don't live here also recreate heavily in that area where the proposed sawmill is. It is also creating a fire hazard, something that I feel we are not really addressing here. What is the balance between the potential mitigation of fire due to fuels reduction, or the fire hazard that it creates by, just by the nature of being a sawmill? Also, I would like to see a study of the air pollution, noise pollution, and traffic pollution that would be potentially created by this project via an EIR. Thank you.
Thanks, Melissa.
Hello, my name's Mary Heatherington. I am a civil environmental engineer, and I agree, we have an excess of wood issue and something that needs to be done. I am also on the airport board, and we just loosened up $2 million to all the various fire districts out of our property tax dollars to address woo-woo issues. However, here I am speaking just for myself, not for the airport district, but I believe we need a full EIR on this, not a mitigated neck deck. People have spoken really highly of you, and I think I also, I believe that. But as Herbert Spencer says, and having worked in power plants, ash treatment is a real issue, and I'm not sure that was addressed. Log decks with fire, one spark. Those decks have been there for many years with no water on it to spray. We've all driven by Arcata, different areas, where it's a much damper environment, and there are sprinklers running on those log decks to keep them from on fire. Truckee Fire Department should also receive some compensation out of this, because if there was a fire out there, they would be the first ones to the entity, first entity there to address it. And I'm not sure that was covered. The little bit I looked through, I didn't see that they were getting covered. Right now, Truckee Fire has to protect homes in Martis Camp, Schaefer's Mill, and gets minimal to no financial support from Placer County for that. And I think that's wrong. The other issues that people were talking about were the water issues. I've known, I know people who had their wells go dry. The traffic sightlines is another issue brought up that's a huge issue. School buses from all through there. And the other aspect, having worked in power plants, the effect of damp wood in a boiler, it does not burn efficiently, and you actually emit more NOx and CO. And how that's being protected, because I'm assuming they will chip the wood, and do they have an enclosure to keep it so that it goes dry when it goes in the boiler? I had a friend who worked biomass or worked in boilers in Washington State. He ended up dying from lung cancer. He said they're very dirty, and you need to have dry wood to do your boilers. So I'm asking for a full EIR. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Hi, my name is Pete Benson. I'm a part-time resident at 16021 Hobart Mills Road. And I have a fire service background as well. I had a 36-year career in the fire service, the last 24 of which is fire chief in the organization formerly known as Squaw Valley Fire. I'm also a 46-year recreational user of Highway 89. I think I know Highway 89 pretty well. I took the time to read all of the comments, as I'm sure all of you did. It was a time-consuming and sometimes frustrating endeavor. There were some very perceptive comments, and I think the staff report really does an excellent job of discussing the project. There's a lot of science. Like, I can't even comprehend how much it costs to get all of the science that has been prepared for this report completed. My hat's off to Dave for being willing to make this kind of investment in this kind of a project. And I think virtually everyone would agree that this is a fundamentally terrific project. It satisfies a fire suppression, fire protection goal that we all agree is enormously important. The provision of employee housing is a fantastic addition. I mean, how many other employers in Truckee are building a new facility and providing almost all of the employee housing that's needed? I really, I can't think of any. The, in the comments, there's a great deal of concern about traffic, and I want to address that just for a moment, because it hasn't been touched on yet. So there are 22 existing trips per day to the Hobart Mills yard now. There are 39 new trips proposed. 80% of those are private vehicles going into and coming out of the employee housing. There are only eight of those trips, eight of the 39 are log trucks. So the hue and cry about the log trucks thundering up and down 89, you know, there are log trucks on 89 already, and we're adding four more log trucks daily to that. So I thoroughly understand the concerns about that, but I think a lot of the comments were made on partial information or on inaccurate information. And although they're well-intentioned, you know, I think there's a little bit more to it than meets the eye. Hats off to the staff for doing such a thorough job, and for all of you being willing to come here and listen to all of us. And I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Pete.
Greetings. My name is Barbara Pelletro, and I'm a partial resident up at Serene Lakes at Donner Summit. And I've been chairing the Safety Committee, the Firewise program for the last six years. I've learned a lot from many of you that are here. And one thing, we've done a lot of work up there. We've had a committee since 2012. We've logged in over almost 600,000 hours that we've reported to Firewise. We've done our risk assessment with Truckee Fire. We've got piles everywhere that are being picked up by Measure T. We're big supporters of Measure T. We got it going on, except for these little log that are skinny that sit all over up there, and there's no place to put them. So I couldn't help but think how important this project is, because we've got everything else going. And our biggest thing now is trying to put a 100-foot border around our community. And what is it for? These skinny little trees that can go there. So we're pretty excited about this project. So thank you.
Thanks, Barbara.
Hello, my name is Jay Grooby. I live in Klondike Flat for the last five years. Been in the area about 25 or more years. First off, I'd like to state that I am not against forest management, but I believe there's a proper place to process these materials, and inside a neighborhood is not one of them. As a father of two young children, I have some serious safety concerns regarding this project. One of my greatest concerns pertains to our access. We only have one road that leads into our neighborhood. Allowing an industrial project to operate without additional ingress egress will put our community members at risk daily and would be extremely irresponsible. This road is steep and icy in the winter months with a drop-off on one side. Aving Klondike Flat Road will likely make it more slippery while allowing dozens of loaded semi-trucks to share this road with our residents and guests. It is by understanding there are no plans for sidewalks, bike lanes, or guardrails to be installed on this road, putting pedestrians, cyclists, as well as motorists at risk when faced head-on with loaded log trucks. There are also no turn lanes planned for trucks entering from Highway 89. In addition to these very serious risks, if there's an industrial accident involving Klondike Flat Road, our residents will more than likely be trapped. This presents a greater-than-significant impact to our community members' safety and well-being. Furthermore, I believe the public has been misled to think that this facility will be taking the region's forest waste, when in reality, it will only be taking forest waste from predominantly one contractor. Why would we allow public grant money to fund an experimental project that is designed to enrich one single contractor when dozens of other companies will still have to take their logs out of town to mills already on operation? It's my belief, allowing this proposed industrial facility to move forward in our single-family home neighborhood as currently planned, shows a complete disregard for our community's safety, and will show extreme bias towards a private corporation utilizing public funds. I ask that the mitigated negative declaration is denied, and an environmental impact report instead be produced. I also ask that the permit be denied until our very reasonable safety concerns have been addressed. Thank you.
Thanks, Jay.
Hello, everyone. My name is Anton Snodtiner, and I'm here to voice my support for the Alpenglow Timber Project. I was born in Truckee, along with my wife and three kids. We live in the Prosser Lakeview neighborhood. It's roughly two miles from the proposed project. I'm also a current board member and immediate past president of the Contractors Association of Truckee Tahoe. I'm also the owner of the Mountain Forge Blacksmith Shop located in the Truckee Planner Center roughly three miles from the project. 23 years ago, I went through the same process to try to get our shop, an industrial area, approved in Truckee. We are in jeopardy of having to move to Reno, move out of the area, but luckily, that project was approved. We now have an industrial park in Truckee that's very vibrant, and my employees live employee housing upstairs, and we're able to keep our business local, buy local supplies, and buy local people with our products. I'm also a personal friend of David Mercer. I can attest to his character, his loyalty, his hard work, and I know he has a vision for this area, and it's all about sustainable forest, and he'll do a great job. So I'm just here to support the project.
Thank you, Anton.
My name's Dave Montgomery, and I'm definitely in support of this project. I've been a resident of Meeks Bay, West Shore Lake Tahoe since 1978, and been working with California State Park Sierra District for that much time. And we got a real problem, and this is a solution. So I'm in support. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Hi, my name's Mike Geary, and I'm representing the residents up in Klondike Flat, and I respectfully request a five-minute time limit.
Is it an organization you're representing?
Just the homeowners' organization.
Are you a member of the, is there a board, or?
Yeah, yes, there is.
I mean...
Registered with the Secretary of State. We're a homeowners' association.
I understand. Are you an officer of the organization?
No, past, past officer.
Okay, so let's keep it to three minutes.
Okay. Just real quick housekeeping here. There was a clarifying mitigation measure added to the project in response to fish and game requirement. I believe that does require a recirculation of the environmental dock. We also request that the three addendums added to the staff report be circulated for a minimum 30-day period, and that clock be restarted. As many have said, we get the purpose of the project, the benefits of the project. I agree with that. I've worked with fire departments. We're going on 20 years right now. I work in the same field with fuels reduction work, and am leading a biomass project in my day-to-day work. That's understood. That's not what we're here to talk about, I don't think. I think the issue is its location. It's in the wrong place. It has too much of an impact on the residents that live there now. So let's not confuse the issue that we should, as to whether or not we should do this project. Let's all agree that we should. Let's just find the right location for it. This hasn't been adequately studied for the current location. It does need an EIR. This planning commission, and then ultimately maybe the Board of Supervisors, are going to have to make special findings, because there are requirements recently adopted and updated and approved by the Nevada County Board of Supervisors in April of this year. It's Section 12.05.052(c)6 of the county code. No one has stood here today or at that table to say that this project is in compliance with those development permit requirements. Number six, it is incompatible with the surrounding area. A special finding is going to have to be made by you to approve this project. You can't fly in the face of your own rules and say, hey, these projects have given a development permit, have to be compatible with surrounding uses, when this one is clearly not. It's being nested in a single-family residential neighborhood, and it's been there since the '60s and '70s. Number eight, erosion traffic safety addressed and properly mitigated, do they properly mitigate the impacts of the project? No, they do not. There's no emergency evacuation route. There's one way in, there's one way out. What happens in a wildfire? You know, that's why Homewood got shut down. That's why Web Smarthis got shut down. There was not sufficient emergency evacuation. This project lacks... shut down. There was not sufficient emergency evacuation. This project lacks that basic public safety need, not to mention the issues with pedestrians, bikes, diesel emissions by people starting up in every direction from that Highway 89 Klondike Flat Road intersection. There's no emergency access. You guys have the ability to put sufficient mitigation measures in. We request an EIR, separate ingress egress, emergency evacuation, dedicated turn lanes on Highway 89, and the hours of operation. Are you serious? Monday through Saturday, seven in the morning till 10 at night? That's only when we sleep will this thing not be working and making noise. And so we just ask for reasonable mitigation measures to be placed on this project that are within your powers and within your jurisdiction to place on the project.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Greetings. My name's Dan Ingles. I've been in Truckee for 35 years. I've had the pleasure of working with Plaster County, doing a lot of the studies and a lot of the efforts that you've talked about here with emergent ingress and egress. Everything's inadequate when you try to stuff a lot of potatoes in a 30 pound bag. The entire area developed in the 30s has all of these problems. 89 is a place that is narrow, bad visibility. Here I am as a competitive cyclist. I'll never ride on that road. It's, it's a place where people come and go for recreational endeavors. I have a hell of a lot more faith in a Class A driver with a bunch of logs or a bunch of cattle or a bunch of hay than I do mom and pop in a Winnebago. I have been a resident in Tahoe Donner for these 35 years. I had the luxury of this. I finish my Plaster County workday. I go to my deck. I pop my favorite beverage. I sit on my deck. I look at Mount Rose. Slightly to the left is Mr. Mercer's project. All the things, the pollution, the air, the light, all of it. I sit there with my cocktail and say, bring it. He deserves it. This community deserves it. Unless we do something about it today, we're going to pay. All these concerns need to come together with some cooperation, not division. And he's doing it better than anybody in this room. I want to support him. This needs to be done. He has my support. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Dan.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the Commission. My name is Steve Frisch. I'm the President of the Sierra Business Council. And I rise to state that the Sierra Business Council strongly supports this project and hopes that you'll take action tonight to approve it. SBC has a long history of engagement on sustainable economic development and forest management projects in the region. We manage the Northeastern California Small Business Development Center, and in that capacity, we've provided technical assistance to more than 10 small diameter timber mills or small biomass operations in the Sierra Nevada, and this is by far the best that we've ever seen. We also manage the Sierra Economic Development District, of which Nevada County is a member. That Economic Development District just recently completed a Sierra Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, otherwise known as the SEDS. One of the pillars of that Economic Development Strategy is standing up a wood infrastructure and wood utilization business in the central Sierra Nevada. That plan was approved by the Nevada County Board of Supervisors and this project is identified in the addendum as a model project, as an example of a project that could be advanced in order to meet that goal. In addition, Sierra Business Council works closely with the California Wildlife Task Force. We manage a workforce education and training program for wildlife or for, for forest workers. And we also are part of a, of a regional conservation partnership called the Northern Sierra Partnership with the Nature Conservancy, Truckee Donner Land Trust, Feather River Land Trust, and Trust for Public Lands that has protected more than 140,000 acres, acres of land in the surrounding 100 mile radius in the last 15 years, which is a really remarkable conservation success for the region. We submitted a letter with about five reasons why we support this project. I want to drill just one of them in my last minute. We did a economic analysis of what the impact of this project would be over the next 50 years, which is the life of the project. And we used econometric software called Implan and Jobs EQ to run that analysis, which has a tolerance of about 5%. So it's accurate to within 5%. This project will create 27.6 new jobs in the region. It has an annual direct economic benefit of $5.4 million per year in the local economy. It has an annual net positive impact of $720,000, $712,000 per year in the adjacent forest economy. Over the 50-year life of the project, that's more than a $300 million net positive impact of this project on our local community. And I want to close with this. We have a project proposal by a local resident who is one of the best environmental records of anyone we've ever worked in, in the region. He's putting on the table an innovative, high technology plant that solves our local problem and he's willing to put 15, $30 million of his own money into it. I have not heard a single argument here tonight that makes the case that the, the environmental data is inaccurate or incorrect. No one has produced any data to state that the traffic analysis is wrong, the air quality analysis is wrong, the sound analysis is wrong. This is on a location zoned for this use with this as an allowable use and it meets all of the thresholds for development. I ask you to vote yes on this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Well, you guys are good. Well, we're approaching our five o'clock break here. And as I had mentioned before, we're going to, going to take a 30-minute break. We will, let's just, before we do that, a show of hands here. If there's anyone else that really wishes to speak. Two?
Let him speak.
Okay, so that's, you two are going to be our last speakers. We'll take our break. We'll come back and we should be able to get this wrapped up. And I can't thank you folks enough for your protocol and decorum and courtesy. This has been a great group. So let's go ahead. We've got six more minutes and we will take our break.
Hi, I'm Pam Gary. I live on Klondike Flat. I've been homeowner there for 21 years, raised my three children there and have enjoyed the quiet, the nature, quite frankly, the dirt roads, the trails, everything about the area. It's the reason that we bought a home there. It's the reason that my, when I bring people there, they say, where, where do you live? I didn't even know this place existed. It's like one of the last quiet neighborhoods in Truckee. And some people might say, oh, you're, you're just being a nimby. You don't want it in your backyard. But the fact of the matter is, I'm hearing everything about 89 and the dangers there. And honestly, I'm feeling, we're 20 homeowners. We have, this is our investment in Truckee. We have paid taxes here. I, I just don't hear anyone talking about our safety besides the fire, which I think is a major issue. I'm very concerned about that. It is a one, there's one road in and out. And Dave Sawmill will be at the beginning of that road. So if something happens, we're trapped. How are we going to get out when his sawmill will be blocking our exit? So that's a major concern I have. And I really think that the fire safety needs to be looked into a little more. In fact, in a letter from the Truckee, Truckee Fire Protection District written on August 8th, it said, "This development raises concerns about fire safety, given the inherent risks associated with sawmill operations." That's a quote from the Truckees in their letter that it was posted on the memo. That's where I got that quote. So if the fire department has concerns because sawmills are inherently dangerous, I believe that our concerns should be listened to. It's not, we're nimby's. We could be trapped there. And also, I just also want to talk a little bit about the fact that they were talking about trucks idling and the amount of time. I don't know who's going to be monitoring that. The bottom of the road, I cannot see multiple logging trucks, not just idling there. And there are homes down there. They'll be listening to that sound. And if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, logging trucks are all owned independently. Dave doesn't own them. They don't necessarily work for Dave. Maybe I'm wrong. But he's not going to be able to control the time that they're idling and what they're doing on that road. And I just think that a little more research needs to be done. I think our neighborhood needs to be, you know, looked into a little more that the detriment it's going to cause to our neighborhood and hasn't been brought up. Also, our real estate value. There's many items that have not been brought up and I just, I feel like this is being rushed. Public comment, when we first started telling people about it, no one had heard about it. It was, it was brushed under the table, but yet there was a 290-page document already produced and not one person knew about it. So I just feel like we would like a little more time. I think a different location is appropriate. As everyone has said, we're not against the actual project. We're against the location. I tried to look into it. I don't understand why I loyalted him. I closed Sawmill. Perhaps he looked into that. That's 30 miles away. Why couldn't that be refurbished? Thank you.
Thanks, Pam.
All right. My name's Heath Spencer. I also live on Klondike Flat Road. I actually live in the house right at the entrance of Klondike Flat Road, have been there for nearly 17 years now. Raised my three children in that home. They've all since graduated, but I pray and hope someday they would want to come back to our house. I want to start off by saying I fully agree in support the need for this type of project. And I also don't want to stand here and recognize that no matter where this type of project goes, it doesn't impact someone that lives nearby. With that said, I still think that, you know, there's been statements made by the U.S. Forest Service today, by Cal Fire, all these organizations that support it. I'm a little dumbfounded as to why one of the safety concerns that we all have as residents is this one-way-in, one-way-out road, also the noise on the one-way road in and out of the home. Why the U.S. Forest Service cannot make an exception to allow a dedicated entrance for this project. It would serve for multiple, multiple reasons. One is it would allow the signage for the business to move to that dedicated entrance, which would, you know, not lessen our home values by making us look like we're part of a sawmill if there's a sign at the entrance of our homes. And it would mitigate the noise part of it. And most importantly, it provides safety for the employees of Dave's business and the people living on site there. And it allows an ingress and an egress for safety vehicles from two directions. Having lived there for 17 winters and having lived in this region since 1988, cars get stuck in the wintertime. So even barring something happens in the summer, I've literally had to pull trucks out of that road that were closing the road with my tractor to get the road back open so residents can get out. There has to be two entrances and exits for a project of this size. Again, I know everyone's going to be impacted, but there is more safety that needs to be done. One other question mark I have, and it hasn't been mentioned, but reading online, and this is just Googling, lots of boiler systems have to supplement the fuel source to keep the heat running at an optimal temperature to meet the air quality requirements of it. There's been no mention or no study on if Dave's going to supplement fuel sources other than wood. And if so, how is that being mitigated? Because one of the number one materials used in that is recycled tires. And that's not going to be good next to my house. Living at the bottom of the hill, the U.S. Forest Service has used our property and our electric bill to run monitors when doing controlled burning because all of the smoke settles at the lowest point. So all of the air quality studies goes right there. The other thing is, is all of the vehicle numbers that have been proposed today are all been pitched as only new vehicles on 89. These are entirely new trips on Klondike Flat, not 89. All passing homes that are 20 feet away. Our property line's 20 feet away.
Thank you. So what will happen here after we take our short break, our 30-minute break, is we will come back and the first thing that will happen is staff will address some of the comments and concerns that we heard here that maybe haven't been addressed in the document, were brought up here new. So we'll go through that process. Then we will open up to the commissioners to ask questions and hopefully get to a resolve. So Tyler?
Excuse me. Are you closing the public hearing?
Yes, I will close the public hearing at this time. And when we come back, it is 5:06. Let's plan on being back here at 5:35.
Ready Nevada County is an education campaign designed to help the public have successful outcomes during emergency events. We really focus on a whole host of disasters or emergency events. We want to have a broad spectrum. We want to be prepared for anything. But really, we focus a lot on wildfire because we know that's one of the most likely events to happen in Nevada County.
Ready, Set, Go is really built around the wildfire premise to prepare residents, to be ready before an event, to move into the set posture when there's a red flag or a fire is near you, and then to go when it's time to go.
Essentially, in its simplest form, it's a three-tiered community emergency preparedness plan.
I have lived in this house, which we built, my husband and I, 26 years ago now, actually. We selected the hardy plank, the concrete siding, and also the metal roof. Then when we moved up here and heard about the 49er fire, that's when we started to say, wow, this really is even more important than we first realized.
So the 49er fire is one of the most historic fires in Nevada County's history. They, they figured it changed the laws of the state of California that said, this is how you have to protect your home. That came out of Nevada County.
Steve Ubanks came from the Fire Safe Council. And the main thing we needed to pay attention to was the ladder fuels. Planting has been removed from the edges of the house so that it does not touch the house. It was an incredible service from the Fire Safe Council to come out and spend a couple of hours going through this property.
So the ready phase is when there's no immediate threat to you and your family. This is the time where you should be doing education and planning, whether that be training, educating yourself, or accumulating equipment, hardening your home, creating defensible space.
Defensible space is really all about creating a buffer zone between your house and flammable vegetation. We really focus on defensible space around the home, that first 100 feet, but also around the roadway, too. Another aspect of the ready phase is hardening the home. And really what that means is making your home more resilient to wildfire.
That's going to be putting the fine-grained mesh around the vents of your home so that embers won't get into, under your house or into the eaves of your house. That's going to be using non-combustible materials on your deck and around your home. So when an ember storm comes through, it's not going to ignite your home itself.
I currently live here in Grass Valley with my parents. All of us have sleep apnea. So we all have CPAP machines that require power in order to run.
I also use a nebulizer and that's used to disperse medication that I need to get myself breathing again. When we have safety shut offs, we have to hook up our equipment to batteries that have inverters.
We have a generator that powers some of the things around the house, but then I obtained a pretty substantial battery from Freed. And it was so easy to go through the process to obtain a battery that I would recommend it to anyone who might have medical needs that require power or really anything. I would highly recommend contacting Freed.
So whether it's a snowstorm or a public safety power shut off, we really want folks to be thinking about, okay, what are the things I'll need on hand to weather the storm? Do I need to have candles? Do I need to have battery-powered radio? Do I need to have flashlights? So what are the things that you'll need to shelter in place or address the disaster at hand?
So a go-bag could be anything. It could be a backpack. It could be a suitcase. It's going to be something that you put together to sustain yourself, your family, your pets if needed. That's going to have food, water, medication, clothing, toiletries to get you by for 72 hours. You need to think of your go-bag as the only resource you may have. Stores may be closed. The power may be out. So you may have to literally live out of this thing for a three-day period as an evacuee.
If you are someone with a disability, maybe you have a chronic health condition. For me, I have type 1 diabetes. I have an insulin pump, right? And so that's a critical piece that I need to plan for if I'm going to ever evacuate or be away from my house, frankly, for any amount of time, right? or be away from my house, frankly, for any amount of time, right? What we find often is that if people don't evacuate with their CPAP machine, with their oxygen concentrator, with their wheelchair, walker, then it can be difficult on the other end.
My name's Ulysses Palencia. I work in the 2-1-1 call center. I'm just a resident of Grass Valley. I have two daughters, a four-year-old and a one-year-old. In Nevada County, 2-1-1 is available 24/7. So what we provide for the community is information. That can be anything from directions to the resource centers. It can be letting them know where the fire is, you know, if they are themselves in an evacuation center, if it's a fire, if there's any information as to whether their power's coming back on during a PSPS. 2-1-1 gets the information that we provide directly from the county, so directly from the Office of Emergency Services. The whole team cares. We're all local community members. We all just want to help.
So we were all sleeping in bed on Thursday, November 8th, in paradise. And first, the house phone rang. Picked up my phone. It was my sister who lived a block or so away from us.
We were woken by a telephone call from my daughter. She said that we were being evacuated.
I left sooner than them. I had everything ready. They were on the way out the door.
There was not time to think about what you're going to take, what you're not going to take.
The night before the fire, I knew it was a red flag warning, and I knew that it was a high risk. So on my way home, I filled up the tank.
On our way out, we didn't get too far from the house, and we're watching the fire coming down the hill.
There was a machine shop right to my right, right there, and it had gas tanks and propane tanks. And I saw a lone ember kind of floating through, dancing through the air, and I watched it as it landed on the machine shop. In the time it took me to get my phone back into hand and to take a picture, it was engulfed in flames. And I knew that within moments, it would start exploding, and I would be dead. And just as I moved out of the range of the explosions, they started happening, and I prayed for the people behind me.
10-minute drive normally to Chico became almost four hours. So it was a long trip.
We started to hear a pattern. People kept telling us their story of how they escaped the campfire, and they talked about how if it wasn't for my neighbor who came and knocked on my door to tell me there was a fire, I don't know that I would have gotten out alive. If it wasn't for my son, who lives next door, picking me up and putting me in their car and driving me out of there, I don't know how I would have survived. And so I started really thinking about this connection between isolation and how connected you are to your community, to your neighbors, to your friends, to your family, and how that can be really helpful in a time of a disaster.
So we were actually the beneficiaries of someone making that plan in advance, to have that group of people that they were going to call. And that, she saved my life that day, so absolutely having that network really saved lives.
Find your five. The idea is that, you know, find trusted allies that can be there and can be responsive and will check in with you if a disaster were to happen.
So we recommend that you put people in your network that are down the street, that are maybe the next town over, that are outside the county, and maybe even outside the state.
The final tier of the Ready, Set, Go is that go piece, and it's simply that. It's go. Evacuation information comes in two types. The first type could be an evacuation warning. This is essentially information that we're going to push out to the public, notifying them of a potential threat in their area where they may have to evacuate their home. An evacuation order is essentially that. We are telling people that it's time to go. There is an imminent threat to life, and we do not believe that you have much time to leave the area.
Code Red is an opt-in alerting system that will dial your number. It'll send you a phone call, a text message, and an email notifying you of an emergency. That message is sent from our office, the Office of Emergency Services. It's going to be very targeted to your area, and it'll be specific to you.
At 5:13, the phone rang with the Code Red call. And so as I was going up 49, I could look over to the left and see the flames in the canyon.
The next layer is for staff to actually be out driving in the areas with a high-low siren. There's no other reason you'll hear that in an area unless we're putting out that evacuation order, not a warning, but an order.
My day started routine patrol, came in, and I was notified by dispatch to respond out to the Jones fire. Houses that had evacuation tags made it so we could just pass by. We knew that the residents had already been evacuated. Residences that did not have the tags, we would have to physically go in, knock on the door, look in the windows, make sure there were no occupants inside.
Once you've been evacuated, as you're leaving, put this tag somewhere very, you know, clearly identifiable, whether it's a mailbox, a gate, your address marker, so that deputies and officers can quickly identify if your residence has already been evacuated.
I mean, you look out my back window here on the east side, and you see how close this fire came. It was certainly a shock, and at the same time, it was such an incredible relief to have the house as safe as it was.
I mean, I think with personal preparedness and being ready, it can feel overwhelming. It can feel like a lot to do, and the most important piece is to just start with one little bite at a time.
Just start the conversation. Have some sort of plan. It can be as small as a meetup place, you know, a destination that everybody will get to, everybody in the household will get to if there's a disaster.
Recognize you live in a community, in a county, that really does take the emergency response as a priority. We have worked diligently throughout the last few years on ensuring that not only our staff are trained and prepared, but we're also putting that out for our community. The more prepared you are in your own community, the better the outcome is going to be.
The level of community awareness, they have to be part of the solution. They have to communicate with their neighbors. They have to be part of the discussion in communities. They have to support the response, the prevention, the education, and ultimately the collaboration and the engagement. People have to be engaged at all levels.
The more you think about it now, the easier it will be when the time comes that you need to evacuate.
We've created this network, and we want you to make sure that you know that you can tap into that. So if you are feeling a little bit overwhelmed, not sure where to start, reach out to one of our offices, reach out to the Fire Safe Council or 2-1-1. We're here to support you. Ready Nevada County is an education campaign designed to help the public have successful outcomes during emergency events. We really focus on a whole host of disasters or emergency events. We want to have a broad spectrum. We want to be prepared for anything. But really, we focus a lot on wildfire because we know that's one of the most likely events to happen in Nevada County.
Ready, Set, Go is really built around the wildfire premise to prepare residents, to be ready before an event, to move into the set posture when there's a red flag or a fire is near you, and then to go when it's time to go.
Essentially, in its simplest form, it's a three-tiered community emergency preparedness plan.
I have lived in this house, which we built, my husband and I, 26 years ago now, actually. We selected the hardy plank, the concrete siding, and also the metal roof. Then when we moved up here and heard about the 49er fire, that's when we started to say, wow, this really is even more important than we first realized.
So the 49er fire is one of the most historic fires in Nevada County's history. They figured it changed the laws of the state of California that said, this is how you have to protect your home. That came out of Nevada County.
Steve Eubanks came from the Fire Safe Council, and the main thing we needed to pay attention to was the ladder fuels. Planting has been removed from the edges of the house so that it does not touch the house. It was an incredible service from the Fire Safe Council to come out and spend a couple of hours going through this property.
So the ready phase is when there's no immediate threat to you and your family. This is the time where you should be doing education.
From the foothills of the Sierra Nevada, a new hero will emerge. One who is ready. One who makes sure their friends and family are set. And has the power to go at a moment's notice. This fire season, you're the hero. We are Ready Nevada County.
Nevada County has a new tool to make evacuations safer and more efficient in the event of an emergency. This new tool is called Zone Haven, and we need you to know your zone. In order to know your zone, you need to go to community.zonehaven.com, type in your address. Once your address populates in the pop-up window, take that information and write down the zone that is given to you where you know you'll find it in case of emergency.
Zone Haven and knowing your zone does not replace NICSOL and/or Code Red. It actually supplements them, and it makes those tools more powerful because you will know what zones are being evacuated or which ones are being placed on advisory. And as a result, you won't have to do anything else other than listen to those messages and know if it's time to go.
Even if you don't have internet, this could be done by word of mouth. It can be done by radio, or it could be us driving down the street. So please know your zone.
From Truckee to Lake of the Pines, from Chicago Park to Spenceville, every single square mile of Nevada County has a zone, and having a zone that you know for your neighborhood is going to help you save time to be able to evacuate and keep you and your family safe.
Ready Nevada County is an education campaign designed to help the public have successful outcomes during emergency events. We really focus on a whole host of disasters or emergency events. We want to have a broad spectrum. We want to be prepared for anything. But really, we focus a lot on wildfire because we know that's one of the most likely events to happen in Nevada County.
Ready, Set, Go is really built around the wildfire premise to prepare residents, to be ready before an event, to move into the set posture when there's a red flag or a fire is near you, and then to go when it's time to go.
Essentially, in its simplest form, it's a three-tiered community emergency preparedness plan.
I have lived in this house, which we built, my husband and I, 26 years ago now, actually. We selected the hardy plank, the concrete siding, and also the metal roof. Then when we moved up here and heard about the 49er fire, that's when we started to say, wow, this really is even more important than we first realized.
So the 49er fire is one of the most historic fires in Nevada County's history. They figured it changed the laws of the state of California that said, this is how you have to protect your home. That came out of Nevada County.
Steve Eubanks came from the Fire Safe Council, and the main thing we needed to pay attention to was the ladder fuels. Planting has been removed from the edges of the house so that it does not touch the house. It was an incredible service from the Fire Safe Council to come out and spend a couple of hours going through this property.
So the ready phase is when there's no immediate threat to you and your family. This is the time where you should be doing education and planning, whether that be training, educating yourself, or accumulating equipment, hardening your home, creating defensible space.
Defensible space is really all about creating a buffer zone between your house and flammable vegetation. We really focus on defensible space around the home, that first 100 feet, but also around the roadway, too. Another aspect of the ready phase is hardening the home, and really what that means is making your home more resilient to wildfire.
That's going to be putting the fine-grained mesh around the vents of your home so that embers won't get into under your house or into the eaves of your house. That's going to be using non-combustible materials on your deck and around your home. So when an ember storm comes through, it's not going to ignite your home itself.
I currently live here in Grass Valley with my parents. All of us have sleep apnea, so we all have CPAP machines that require power in order to run.
I also use a nebulizer, and that's used to disperse medication that I need to get myself breathing again. When we have safety shut-offs, we have to hook up our equipment to batteries that have inverters.
We have a generator that powers some of the things around the house, but then I obtained a pretty substantial battery from Freed, and it was so easy to go through the process to obtain a battery that I would recommend it to anyone who might have medical needs that require power, or really anything. I would highly recommend contacting Freed.
So whether it's a snowstorm or a public safety power shut-off, we really want folks to be thinking about, okay, what are the things I'll need on hand to weather the storm? Do I need to have candles? Do I need to have battery-powered radio? Do I need to have flashlights? So what are the things that you'll need to shelter in place or address the disaster at hand?
So a go-bag could be anything. It could be a backpack. It could be a suitcase. It's going to be something that you put together to sustain yourself, your family, your pets if needed. That's going to have food, water, medication, clothing, toiletries to get you by for 72 hours. You need to think of your go-bag as the only resource you may have. Stores may be closed. The power may be out. So you may have to literally live out of this thing for a three-day period as an evacuee.
If you are someone with a disability, maybe you have a chronic health condition. For me, I have type 1 diabetes. I have an insulin pump, right? And so that's For me, I have type 1 diabetes. I have an insulin pump, right? And so that's a critical piece that I need to plan for if I'm going to ever evacuate, or be away from my house, frankly, for any amount of time, right? What we find often is that if people don't evacuate with their CPAP machine, with their oxygen concentrator, with their wheelchair, walker, then it can be difficult on the other end.
My name's Ulysses Palencia. I work in the 2-1-1 call center. I'm just a resident of Grass Valley. I have two daughters, a four-year-old and a one-year-old. In Nevada County, 2-1-1 is available 24/7. So what we provide for the community is information. That can be anything from directions to the resource centers. It can be letting them know where the fire is, you know, if they are themselves in an evacuation center if it's a fire, if there's any information as to whether their power's coming back on during a PSPS. 2-1-1 gets the information that we provide directly from the county, so directly from the Office of Emergency Services. The whole team cares. We're all local community members. We all just want to help.
So we were all sleeping in bed on Thursday, November 8th, in paradise. And first, the house phone rang. Picked up my phone. It was my sister who lived a block or so away from us.
We were woken by a telephone call from my daughter. She said that we were being evacuated.
I left sooner than them. I had everything ready. They were on the way out the door.
There was not time to think about what you're going to take, what you're not going to take.
The night before the fire, I knew it was a red flag warning, and I knew that it was a high risk. So on my way home, I filled up the tank.
On our way out, we didn't get too far from the house, and we're watching a fire coming down the hill.
There was a machine shop right to my right, right there. And it had gas tanks and propane tanks. And I saw a lone ember kind of floating through, dancing through the air. And I watched it as it landed on the machine shop. In the time it took me to get my phone back into hand and to take a picture, it was engulfed in flames. And I knew that within moments, it would start exploding, and I would be dead. And just as I moved out of the range of the explosions, they started happening. And I prayed for the people behind me.
10-minute drive normally to Chico became almost four hours. So it was a long trip.
We started to hear a pattern. People kept telling us their story of how they escaped the campfire. And they talked about how if it wasn't for my neighbor who came and knocked on my door to tell me there was a fire, I don't know that I would have gotten out alive. If it wasn't for my son who lives next door picking me up and putting me in their car and driving me out of there, I don't know how I would have survived. And so I started really thinking about this connection between isolation and how connected you are to your community, to your neighbors, to your friends, to your family, and how that can be really helpful in a time of a disaster.
Thank you again, everyone, for your patience and perseverance and hanging in there and your courtesy. So, okay, as I had mentioned prior, what we're going to do now is let staff respond to some of the public comments we heard, and we'll go from there. So Tyler and Kyle, it's all you.
Thank you, Chair Mastornato. As you mentioned, there are a number of items that were brought up that staff would like to address. And following my comments, I'm happy to address any additional questions or clarifications that this commission requests. So I'm just sort of going in chronological order here of how I heard them. But the first one is that sawmill fires and the wildfire risk should necessitate, excuse me, the development of an environmental impact report. As discussed in hearing today and in the environmental document, the initial study of mitigated negative declaration, the wildfire risk has been conditioned and mitigated by both CAL FIRE and the Truckee Fire Protection District to a less-than-significant level. And as a result, as lead agency, the Nevada County Planning Department did utilize the mitigated negative declaration as the appropriate environmental document due to the lack of achieving significance thresholds. There were a number of comments requesting a second access road or some sort of emergency egress. The Land Use and Development Code only requires and necessitates secondary access for discretionary projects that are proposed beyond dead-end road limits, which in this case, the dead-end road limit identified in the Land Use and Development Code and state law is one mile. And so because of the nature of this property not achieving that dead-end road standard, no secondary access was proposed by the Planning Department or required under the code. The third item is intersection safety questions, both at Klondike Flat Road, Alder Point, and other intersections. These specific intersections were not included in the traffic impact analysis because they were beyond the distance required for the level of analysis. And secondarily, most of these, well, all of the intersections are regulated and are property of Caltrans, and that would be the state authority that would require some level of infrastructure improvements. So as discussed, Caltrans reviewed this project and recognized that the level of impacts did not necessitate turn lanes or other improvements along the highway system born from the potential impacts of this project. So as a result, none of those requirements for infrastructure improvements or turn lanes have been proposed with this project. And sort of secondarily, any improvements to Caltrans is generally the responsibility of Caltrans to require, and generally for Caltrans to implement, is not necessarily for project applicants to go to work in the highway. The third question related to kind of septic and well quality, or third, fourth section. The proposed project and primarily the residential units in the sawmill facility did conduct soil testing pursuant to Department of Environmental Health requirements to determine that there's adequate soils to support septic systems. Septic systems are proposed for the facilities, and although they're not required to be designed yet, as a condition of project approval, those septic systems will be required to be submitted to the Department of Environmental Health to meet department and statewide standards for septic systems. And similarly, for wells, the well will be required to be tested and achieve both quantity and quality standards defined by environmental health. Similarly to the previous discussion relating to intersection safety, but truck traffic impacts and safety impacts to necessitate a possibility of EIR or of the EIR development. And similar to the previous discussion, traffic and transportation safety was reviewed by both county staff, Department of Public Works, and Caltrans, and determined that due to the nature and size and scope of the project, no additional kind of infrastructure or safety improvements were necessitated at this time. An additional question related to both Truckee Fire Protection District compensation and service is addressed through conditions of approval, as I briefly discussed in the hearing and in the staff report, that the project is required to enter into either an out-of-area service agreement with the district or an annexation. And both of those mechanisms do necessitate fee payments towards the Truckee Fire Protection District for the proportionate services they provide. And while those specific numbers have not been identified yet, they will be identified through the LAFCO process, through their municipal service reviews to determine both adequate service capability and then the kind of cost proportionality to pay for those services. The next question related to both the wood ash outputs of the boiler and hazardous materials utilized by the proposed project, and both the wood ash and hazardous materials and the operation of the site are regulated under the Department of Environmental Health COOPA program, the certified... Certified Uniform Protection Agency, which is the state regulatory program that trickles down to county and local departments to regulate both the use and operation of hazardous materials. So all uses, including the uses of hazardous materials, including the potential for wood ash, would be regulated under the Environmental Health COOPA program and be required to achieve both air quality and water quality standards as defined by the Northern Sierra Air Quality Management District and La Houghton Regional Water Quality Control Board, respectively. The next question pertained to the need for sidewalks, bike lanes, and guardrails. And similar to the previous discussion related to transportation impacts, although those could have been requirements, the review by both Department of Public Works and Caltrans did not identify the need or regulatory threshold to add these additional either safety or other pieces of transportation infrastructure. As a result, they had not been included as conditions of project approval. There were discussions of how the changes to mitigation measures and additional technical addendums developed for the project would require recirculation. However, under CEQA and the guidelines, recirculation is required under very specific activities, and they are generally when either new or changing significant impacts are identified. And again, that goes back to my discussion of significant, less-than-significant, or no impact. Whereas if a regulatory body or the Planning Department or the commission were to add additional conditions or change conditions, so long as those changes weren't addressing a new significant impact, the recirculation threshold would not be met. And so as a result, that is why we did not recirculate the environmental document after those modifications to the mitigation measures. There were also requests for extended review time for the environmental documents. As we discussed, the Planning Department pursuant to comments received and requests by the public did extend the environmental review from the required 30-day circulation period for environmental document or for mitigated negative declarations and most other environmental documents. We did extend it to that 231-day comment periods, and don't believe that additional recirculation is warranted or necessary under CEQA or the CEQA guidelines. And finally, there were questions about fuel source supplements for the biomass boiler. And as I briefly discussed here and in the staff report, in order for the operator to achieve that permit to operate and authority to construct, they are required to both achieve annual inspections and to continuously monitor outputs of the biomass boiler so that to achieve both Northern Sierra Air Quality Management District regulations as well as statewide air quality standards. So throughout operation, that boiler unit would be required to operate below those maximum standards. And then the last final thing was in response to the request by the project applicant to amend mitigation measure 3C relating to that permit to operate. And staff has developed a similar proposal for the commission's review to provide both the flexibility that the applicant requested, but also the requirement to achieve the air district's requirements. So here in track line changes, it gives the applicant the potential opportunity to coordinate with the air district to identify an alternative emission control device or identify specific operational techniques that achieve the same practical effect as the specific selective catalytic reduction device. And so with that, I am happy to respond or answer any more questions. And should you propose to adopt or propose to approve this project to adopt the mitigation measure 3C as amended?
Thank you, Kyle. Good work. Okay, so at this time, I guess we will open up to questions from the commissioners. And once again, Commissioner Garst, this is your district.
Thank you. I was wondering about fire suppression and mitigation requirements on-site. I noticed that there are several hydrants located throughout the project area. Is that, I was wondering if that was a planning department requirement, a land use development requirement, or if that was, went beyond your requirements?
It is not a Land Use and Development Code requirement. These are requirements defined by the fire agency providing services generally. And so these were defined to meet Caltrans standard, or, excuse me, not Caltrans, CAL FIRE standards. And similarly, Truckee Fire Protection District also reviewed the project because it was designed under CAL FIRE standards and didn't propose any additional hydrants or additional change due to the compliance with state law.
Okay. And then I was just wondering, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about requiring additional EIR or making, requiring an EIR for this project. And I hear you with the, that it does not meet CEQA's significant threshold that would trigger that. I'm wondering, just for like level playing field, has that ever been something that the department has required when significant impacts have not been found as like a, as a requirement?
Generally not, because the threshold for requiring an EIR is prescribed in state law. If an EIR is produced without the, or prior to identification of significant impacts, that is usually with input and at the direction of the applicant in order to mitigate potential risk of litigation in the future.
Yeah, I know that those are not small feats to achieve. So I just wanted to clarify that, that we're applying, you know, standard requirements across the board to applicants. Great. Somebody mentioned that we, it is our job to require that this 100%, that this project would not pose any risks or potential hazards to the health or the environment. And if that was our standard, nothing would ever be approved. And so we're, I just wanted to clarify that we're trying our best to, you know, take the pros and cons of any project and weigh them for what is best for our community, for our residents, for the environment. I think that that's a too great of a burden to put on us as a body. Personally, as an architect, I specify wood materials all the time, including glue lamps. I see them coming from Canada. I think it'd be great to have a... I think it'd be great to have locally sourced products here. I also believe as an environmentalist in the power of these wood, wood mass timbers to do carbon sequestration, which I think is, goes beyond kind of like our local impact and is more of a global impact of these kinds of projects. So that's just my personal opinion. With that, I move on.
Thank you. Commissioner Duncan.
I would agree. This project definitely has local impacts, that the homeowners who live there in the subdivision will be impacted, as usually the case when new development is proposed. It is just interesting that it's the type of development that historically has occurred in the Truckee area, in the forest lands that we, most of us love to live in. And acknowledging that and trusting that the applicant is going to be a good neighbor within his community, maybe there are solutions down the road that can be worked on to accommodate the real fears, concerns of the people who live there and what they think, you know, how it impacts their quality of life. It's terrible to feel that you're impacting someone's quality of life. We all have our sense of paradise and, you know, choose where we live and we want to take care of it. But I also recognize that we also live in the broader community. There's a regional aspect look at here. And that is that it is a regional solution to a lot of the problems that affect everyone, even locally, that fire danger is real and getting rid of surplus wood products is an ongoing effort, especially with all the fires happening and the loss of forest lands. You know, does this help reduce that threat? Or when that threat really starts rolling, does it slow it down? One would hope so. I love this project for the fact that it includes employee housing. I think that, again, has a regional impact. I mean, Truckee is impacted with unaffordable rents, reduced numbers of places to consider, and the workers are forced to go further and further afield, which makes it even less economically viable when you consider the cost of transportation to come back to where they, where they work. It also, there's a glimmer of hope. Maybe some of that timber industry jobs, those skills that were lost when, when that went downhill will resurface in a responsible manner and that we will see more jobs available. And maybe based on the applicant, there will be other projects that can see that this makes sense and it can be a real solution. So those are my comments, and I appreciate everyone taking the time to come down here. It's not that much fun sitting through this and, you know, having to get up, especially in public, and speak your mind. It's tedious and can be intimidating. But I appreciate the report. I think it was thorough, and I think we always gain more from listening to people as to what their experiences are and what it means living in Nevada County.
Thank you. Commissioner Millman.
Thank you. So I have a couple of questions that I didn't ask earlier, and some of them are relatively minor, but I wonder if we can go through a couple of them. I heard something earlier that said the noise from the boiler is 24/7. Is the boiler inside of a building?
Yes, that is correct. The boiler does have the, or would be running 24/7 and is located in this attached structure that I'm circling on the site plan here. So the boiler is entirely, entirely enclosed within that boiler plant building.
And that building also, of course, is insulated, correct?
That is correct.
So realistically, that noise isn't going to go very far?
That is generally correct, and the, the noise analysis as Gavin, the project representative alluded to, modeled the building with no insulation and doors open. So the added insulation would reduce those noise impacts beyond what was modeled in the technical analysis.
And then on the residential buildings, it looks like those are wood sited? Why, why was that not required to be a more like concrete siding or something that was a little less flammable?
There are conditions of approval in the project application to achieve California Building Code WUI standards, but as discussed previously, the county does not have a whole lot of discretionary authority over the employee housing because the use, design, development, and implementation is held wholly with the Department of Housing and Community Development.
Well, it sounds like that's not our call, but I know if I were building my house new, I would put something more than wood siding. It would be non-plan. I know we've talked about it, but with the ash from the biomass, how, how is that disposed of?
I would look for the project applicant to define some specifics, but I know that there is a component of developing biochar for use and spreading through forested areas or use as a soil additive. But I hate to call you up again, Dave, after you just sat down, but please feel free to provide some more specific directions to your plans.
It's okay. I'd much rather stand up. Yeah, the plan as of now is soil amendment added to topsoil or other biochar soil amendments.
Thanks.
Yeah, add carbon to soil.
And then inside the sawmill, what kind of ventilation or worker protection is in place?
Everything that meets Caloosa standards as far as dust or what?
I think I meant mostly dust.
Yeah, so there's, there's dust controls on all the equipment and, yeah, it's all met as part of the manufacturing process.
So it's filtered as part of the equipment?
Yeah.
Is there additional filters, like on the ventilation for the building as a whole?
Not for the building as a whole. There's no overall exhaust for the building. There's dust collection as part of the machines that require it, machines that generate the dust. As far as the sawmill line, green logs don't generate much dust. It's usually the planers because the wood's already dry. So that's where the dust is coming from, and that's all extracted and then captured.
And that's part of what's going into the biomass?
Yes. Well, the majority of what's going into the boiler side of it is coming from the sawmill line, not the planer line.
Okay. And what is the, why ask for a waiver on the catalytic?
So the way these boilers are built, they're built with a gasification recirculation process, which deals with the NOx. And talking to the manufacturer and then their engineers, it's far more reliable and really works much more effectively than the SNCR systems do from their, from their experience doing it.
So do you anticipate that this would actually exceed the requirements?
They feel that the boiler should be down in category A is what they're thinking they should operate at. The, yeah, I mean, it's pretty, there's a couple of really long memos that go along with it, but that's the, that's the gist of it.
We've talked a number of times about local logs being unmarketable due to species and size, but you're going to be able to use it?
It's not unmarketable for what we feel we can manufacture for it. It's unmarketable for us to send them to Sierra Pacific because of the type of wood products that Sierra Pacific produces. They, like for like lodgepole pine, lodgepole pine, you can market as all sorts of products, but SPBI generally doesn't want to run that into their pine stock just because they don't. And then Jeffrey pine, which is predominantly what we have around here on the east side, they're not a big fan of that for framing material, which is, which is predominantly what they run through their mills, or they're predominantly framing mills. And so for framing materials, they want dog fur, red fur, a little bit of white fur. The pine that they do run, they run into their door and window molding shops, and they can source that from other places and basically don't want to have to buy it from here.
I think I saw a filtration swale back behind the building. Is that, is that predominantly for rainwater, et cetera, coming off of the roof?
Yes, it's, yeah, it's part of the whole drainage system for all the impervious surfaces.
And then my last question, who plows the road?
Right now, we help the homeowners plow the road, and we, as part of the mitigation measure, we said that we would plow the road, at least Klondike, from our entrance down.
Okay. I think that's my questions. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you. Commissioner McAtire.
Thank you very much. First of all, I've enjoyed coming back up to Truckee. I know the feeling of many Truckeeites that, you know, the western county sort of rules the roost, and you guys up here always get the short end of the deal. And I can tell you that's not the case with this commissioner, who ran for office up here four times as your county superintendent of schools, walked, walked door to door, and then ran measure A to do the tax for the libraries and so that we could promise our first commitment was renovating the Truckee library. So I've stood in front of your post offices, the two of them, and handed material out to people that came out, because if you hand people your material when you go in, they take it and throw it right in the garbage can. But if you're running for office, you wait till they come out and you hand them the material here at the Truckee post office. Anyway, I want you to know that western Nevada County cares about eastern Nevada County equally, and we, and we took this project very seriously. Speak with that said, I have a few questions for Kyle. So Kyle, tell me, you mentioned that there's going to be a berm up at the top of the road potentially. What's that going to look like and how high is that going to be?
Yes, there will be a berm.
Where?
So I'm circling it here, very nearby the entrance of, of the, of the facility at Klondike Flat Road. So there's a vegetated berm here. I don't have the height off the top of my head.
So what's the intent? I'm trying to understand what the intent behind that is.
Yeah, the intent was to provide some additional screening from the properties on the other side of it to essentially provide that elevated material so that the sawmill facility wouldn't be able to be seen from the private properties on the other side of it.
Okay. I just drove up there today, and it was sort of like, that's an interesting place. I thought it would be more diagonal with the Klondike Road. So I'm sort of, I'm sort of interested in a larger berm for these families, if possible. Just, just noting that in your, in your memo, if you don't mind. That looks to be about, I don't know, 50 feet or so. Anyway, I'm just, I'm trying to think of the, of a less, anything we can do to create less site problems for these neighborhoods would be appreciated. I'm sorry, somebody said something. Sir, Mr.?
Oh, let's, let's, let's move on.
I'd love to.
Please, no. Nope.
What? It's Mr.?
Did you?
Oh, okay.
Sure, yeah. Can you tell me about your thought on the berm, if possible?
So in our meeting we had with the neighbors, oh, 18 months ago, it was brought up that Mr.[S07] King didn't appreciate that we were driving across his corner of the property into our gate. So we elected to move the entrance entirely onto our property through, it's like a 10-foot cut down there.
I see.
And so we're gonna put the, an earthen screen in the old driveway, which we felt would really help block any sound or noise from any traffic or anything coming up the hill, because the way the topography is there, you're quite a ways down the hill already below the line of sight of the neighbors.
Yeah, so therefore, when I drove in today, I drove where the berm would be.
Correct.
So you're having a new entrance into the property.
Correct.
Thank you. Let me, thank you very much. Stay there, I have a number of questions coming up.
I'll stand by, sir.
Okay. So can we talk about the, the, hold on, I got my, so there's a comment by a gentleman here today that said, there's somebody turning every 11 minutes or so. Kyle, would you tell me again? I want to know how often are logging trucks going to be turning in or coming out? Could you answer that question for me?
I'm not sure that that has a very easy answer, because as we discussed previously, there's the variation of busiest day to less busy days based on the trip generation of, I believe, 81 total vehicle trips, both including truck and residential trips spread across--
I want to, I want to bifurcate the, the residential trips of the workers who come to the mill or they live in the home. I want to know how many, how many logging trucks at its busiest will be turning left or right in and out of that facility?
Yeah, absolutely. I don't have that math on the top of my head, but I'd be happy to work it out pretty quickly. But it's essentially the number of truck trips, which I believe, and Gavin or LSC, please correct me if I'm wrong, was around 41 over the 15-hour daily period. So that 41 divided by 15 hours, man, you're questioning my math here.
Three.
That is absolutely correct. Excuse me, over 12 hours, that 40 trips over 12 hours.
Three, a little over three.
Mm-hmm.
An hour, coming in and out. We're talking ingress and egress, coming in and out, or is that just in?
That is in and out, so the trip generation goes both ways. And I just, one of my teammates did the math for me. It's just under three and a half.
Yeah, okay, thank you. My next question is to you. Bear with me. I'd like to talk about the nature of those homes there, because I read in many comments from people about sort of, it's like there's some kind of quasi-problem relative to their construction, relative to, you can't help but think, why is there a general plan that says this is forestry, and then we have half-acre lots right next to it? Could you give us a little history of the, of the situation?
Yeah, so some of these parcels were created prior to the county's general plan, so there was no designation essentially to be applied to them at the time. And many of the parcels were created prior to the California State Subdivision Map Act, which is the law that regulates subdivisions statewide. So that was signed into law in March of 1972. So the parcels that were created before that had slightly lesser standards. There have been parcels that were created post-1972, which one of the commenters alluded to. And those parcels created post-1972, outside of the allowances of the Subdivision Map Act, are required to enter into a process called a Certificate of Compliance to legalize those parcels. And as a matter of law and practice, when parcels come in that achieve statutory requirements to become legal, we enter into that certificate of compliance process to legalize them rather than maintaining some level of essentially undevelopable parcels. And although--
Can I, can I ask a follow-up? Sorry. Is, so you're, it's implying that if you have to come, that those after 72, what about those prior to 72? It's making it sound like there's some illegal component relative to their homes, no?
No, prior to 72, there was just no state subdivision standard to comply with. So there was, essentially subdivision of those properties had far fewer steps than they did post-92 or, or even today, and could have been subdivided through records of surveys or other technical land survey options that is not a traditional subdivision. of surveys or other technical land survey or options that is not a traditional subdivision as we all know of today. So I wouldn't call those pre-1972 divisions illegal subdivisions. They were perfectly legal. They just did not need to comply with the 1972 map act because it wasn't in place.
And how many vacant parcels sit up there that are undeveloped at this point? Any idea on that?
Not off the top of my head, but I would not imagine that number is very big, one or two.
Oh, okay.
I think that most of those parcels there have some measure of development or improvements.
So there won't be, for the most part, any more development occurring of residential homes in that area?
Not without a rezone and general plan amendment, because the forest zoning district, in this case, requires newly created parcels to be 640 acres or larger. And then similarly, in the 90s, the four or five parcels directly to the north were rezoned by the Board of Supervisors with a site performance combining district to limit the, the full-time, or limit the use of those to recreational and seasonal use only. So there are a few properties that are limited to not be allowed for full-time residences at the direction of the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you. And finally, question, so the lighting, the lighting goes off at 10 o'clock, I gather, and it's only on a sensor? Is that, and it's all downward-focused lighting, is that correct?
That is correct. Standard conditions of approval and Land Use and Development Code requirements require all lighting to be downcast and shielded and have some measure of sensors. And as I, as I briefly discussed and will reiterate here, we didn't provide specific sensor requirements in these conditions of approval, unless some flexibility there for the applicant to define some sensor that works with his business operation.
Thank you. Mr. Mercer, thank you for waiting for me.
No problem, sir.
So my, my question is, let's go back to the ash disposal for a minute. You're mixing it, you sort of said, with dirt. Does that mean that it gets disposed on your property, or does it go somewhere else?
Right now, Al Pombo, where we operate out of Hobart Mills, runs a topsoil side as well. And that ash can be incorporated into his topsoil as a soil amendment.
I see. So it won't be on your property?
No.
Could you tell me about what, what hazardous waste will be on your property?
Diesel fuel.
Diesel fuel.
Dried and clear. Lubricants. And that's about it.
So, so--
Well, and then the, the mass timber glue would, I guess that would fall into that category as well.
So the glue's considered a hazardous material, or?
Well, it has an MSDS sheet, so everything that has an MSDS sheet, I would consider to be, I would, I, I'm not, I'm not an expert on that.
Sure, sure. Okay. Can you talk about, it's been brought up about the fire threat of lumber mills? Would you like to, I'd like to give you the chance to be able to address that, that fire, fire in mills is more prevalent than other, other--
Yes.
--industrial sources?
So wood burns, everyone knows that. There were quite a few pictures floated around of wood chip piles on fire. That's predominantly, in today's age, what lights on fire at sawmills. So sawmills, especially large sawmills, generate a lot of wood chip. And they like to pile it really high. And when they pile it high, it starts to get really hot as part of the decomposition. And you have a cone, and eventually that cone generates enough heat that it lights itself on fire. For us, we're not storing anywhere near that amount of biomass. So as far as that fire risk, it's, it's not prevalent. The sawmill itself inside, the building's 100% sprinklered. It's, be hard-pressed, in my view, to have a fire hazard from the sawmill operation itself. There's been discussion about the log decks being a hazard.
Yes.
That's, you can't light those log decks on fire. And there was a comment about the sprinkling of the logs from one of the--
Yes, that was gonna be one of my questions.
So you sprinkler logs to keep them moist so they don't check. You don't sprinkler them to keep them from lighting on fire.
Right, so, so will there be sprinklers on your log so that they don't crack, or how does--
Right now, since we have such a winter season, that, you know, my view is that we won't have to sprinkler them. If we can consume enough in the summer and store enough for winter, that we're not gonna have that much loss from checking.
Okay, and prior to the construction of that facility, will those old logs all be removed?
No, because there's a fair bit of that that's still usable. Especially like the lodgepole decks. Lodgepole doesn't generally go bad. It's pretty hardy wood. So we're pretty, we're gonna do something with that. The Jeffrey Pine decks that came off the pine plantations a couple years ago, that stuff's gonna be pretty, pretty gone.
So give me an idea of the percentage that will be still there, you know, when all the buildings are completed, or to get ready to complete them?
No, well, it depends. Right now, where we are working, it's all lodgepole. We've got three months of lodgepole that's got to go somewhere. So chances are that the decks that are there are gonna be that size when construction starts, because we have to put it somewhere.
How much water does the, does a lumber mill of your, your size use? I know you've got well to be able to have a storage tank and housing, water for the housing. How much water will you be using for your needs in the lumber mill?
So the only water consumption as part of any of the milling process is humidifying the kilns as far as the final step of kiln drying. And it's pretty minimal. Basically, you gotta add some humidity to set the pitch in pine, right at the end of the kiln cycle.
So there's nothing in terms of water to cool saw blades or anything else?
No. Well, there's, no.
Okay. And, and what products will be going into that boiler? So will everything, will the, will the bark be going in there? I mean, tell me, tell me, what's going in the boiler? And what is then a forest product that you just sort of have that you can't do anything with, or you won't be using?
So yes, the bark from the debarker goes into the boiler. It's supplemented by residuals from the sawmill. And then the residuals from the planer, which is already dried, we're either gonna press into a pressed wood product, or which is just basically using the lignite that's already in the wood to bind it. Either it's, either a pressed firewood log or some other product. And we can also utilize a lot of that planer residue for shavings, for like coarse bedding. And that should consume just about all the wood waste.
So, and all of it will be produced by, I mean, the final products I'm hearing are all be produced by you. So you're not really taking many products off of the, off of the mill site to get produced somewhere else. The logs come in and out they go, either as firewood, glue lamps, you know, two-by-fours, you know, or, or they go into the boiler. Is that a fair assessment?
Yes, and the model is to try and make as much finished product as we can make, because that makes the most sense to, for the maximum utilization. It doesn't make sense to send a half-done product to somebody else to then finish it. If we can finish it ourselves, it makes everything better for everybody.
So there's no ammonia being used in a plant like your facility at all?
No.
Okay. And could you, finally, final question, could you tell me, I'm, I'm still a little lost about the Hobart Mills site. You rent that facility, or you rent some space there? You don't own anything over there?
No, we've leased about, well, two and a half, three acres from Pombo for about 15 years over there.
And so you, you are departing--
Yes.
You'll be departing all operations from there?
Correct.
And, and you have no idea, I mean, there's no intent by Mr. Pombo or whatever to, I don't know, if none of, none of your business, nor probably none of our business.
But I'm sure, I'm sure Al will be in front of you at some point about whatever he's doing at Hobart.
Okay, thank you very much.
There you go. Do you want me to sit down or stay here?
I don't, so over to Mike. I'm done. Thank you.
I'll let you sit.
Are you sure? I don't mind standing.
No, I'm, I'm pretty sure. I think, I'm gonna put this on Kyle. Okay, just a couple of quick questions, just for clarification. A county road, we can put conditions on a project for the applicant to put a crosswalk in. We did that with Dollar General in Penn Valley. Even turn lanes, or any type of road infrastructure, becomes the responsibility, financially mainly, of the applicant if we put those types of conditions on a project, correct?
Generally speaking, yes, Mr. Chair.
So just to help us understand this Caltrans dynamic, even if the applicant volunteered to put in these two turn lanes, Caltrans would not allow that?
I do not want to speak for Caltrans specifically. They didn't require it for this project. And usually, improvements that Caltrans, Caltrans implements on their highways is defined and designed by Caltrans themselves and their engineers for, for the benefit of the greater highway system. Private property owners could issue proposals for improvements within Caltrans. And then Caltrans would usually take those under advisement through their traditional project review process. But I'm not aware of private developments having much success kind of entering into that, that Caltrans review process, because they have a very specific and itemized list of projects in what's called the STIP, the State Transportation Improvement Program. And there's essentially an itemized list of projects by need or location or expansion for one reason or another. And just as a function of the state agency, they have the allowance to sort of preempt some of our kind of local controls in their rights of way.
I'll just add to that, that if the traffic study did identify a need, and Caltrans would require an improvement if they felt there was an impact or a safety concern.
So Caltrans has done these public-private enterprises with an applicant on a project?
Correct. Usually, they pay a proportional share from the impacts of their project based on need. Your Dollar General reference, the one in Altisira was required to do some improvements to the traffic light on 49 and Altisira. But it didn't get built, so those improvements were made.
Yeah, okay. All right, well, that clears that up for me. And I find myself going to this question quite often now, especially when it comes to use permit issues coming before us. Kyle, if you could, you know, as a matter of conversation and a point, what can the applicant do with this property without a use permit right now? And more specifically, can, can he run 80 trucks a day up there into his property?
So the nature of what we consider allowed uses pursuant to the zoning code, so in residential zones, that's residences. In the forest zone, there are limited allowed uses, one being a temporary storage of logs. But there are not strict regulatory requirements for trip generation or those sorts of things for allowed uses. In a similar fashion, we don't limit or identify a number of trips for a residence in a residential zone. So it's sort of the function of allowed uses, that there just aren't those specific regulatory controls that are applied through a use permit or some other discretionary activity.
So a use permit puts a number on it. Without the permit, it is, if the applicant ran 100 trucks a day up there, is there a, could that turn into a code compliance issue, or?
Yes, it could. So it's not that there is no regulatory control, there are just no very specific regulations. So an operation could rise to the level of what's considered a public nuisance. And we do regulate nuisance, but that is generally defined in a court of law.
Gotcha. I, you know, it, it, I find it always curious as to, you know, I, I hate to go there and say, you know, this is a pick-your-poison situation. It's not. But sometimes, perfect becomes the enemy of good, and it, it becomes a difficult choice here, right? I think this is, even, even hearing from folks that oppose this project, it's a much-needed project. And I think everyone's in agreement that the applicant, as far as being a person and a, and a good neighbor and someone to work with, is above reproach. So-- And then it, again, it leaves me to the, the other thing I say all the time, if not this, what? And if not here, where? But generally, I, I think that I could support this project. That's all I have.
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion, if we're done.
I think we're ready.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that after review and consideration, that we adopt the proposed mitigation negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program, EIS 24-004, as amended and provided in attachment two pursuant to sections 1507.3.5(c)(1), 1507.4, and 1509.7 of the California Environmental Qualities Act guidelines, and make findings A through D. Is this the one that's amended, or is it the next one?
It is this one that is as amended. And if you could clarify, that also as amended in the hearing as we discussed.
As amended in the hearing, as discussed in relationship to--
Mitigation Measure 3(c).
Mitigation Measure 3(c). I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. If the clerk will call the vote, please.
Thank you, Commissioner, Chair. On this motion, how do you vote, please? Commissioner Millman? Sorry. I apologize. Commissioner Garst?
Yes.
Commissioner McAtier?
Yes.
Commissioner Millman?
Yes.
Commissioner Duncan?
Yes.
And Chair Mastodonado?
Yes.
Thank you.
I make a second motion, or I make another motion to approve that after reviewing and considering the proposed project, that we approve the conditional use permit, CUP 23-004, subject to the conditions of approval and mitigation monitoring and reporting program, attachment one, and pursuant to the Nevada County zoning regulations, make the following findings, A through L.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Tyler, you have something?
Just want to clarify, your motion includes the amendments to mitigation measure 3(c).
Including the amendments to finding C3.
Mitigation measure.
Mitigation measure, C3.
My second.
We have a motion and a second. If the clerk will call the vote, please.
Thank you. How do you vote, Commissioner Garst?
Yes.
Commissioner McAtier?
Yes.
Commissioner Millman?
Yes.
Commissioner Duncan?
Yes.
And Chair Mastodonado?
Yes, both motions pass.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, this, the approval of the use permit is subject to a 10-day appeal.
Correct, all actions of the commission.
Yep. Okay, that concludes the agenda item for the public hearing issue. And we'll move on to finish up here. Any discussion about upcoming meetings, or?
Mr. Chair, at this time, I don't believe we have any upcoming meetings. The next potential project, likely maybe the update to the cannabis ordinance, potentially tiny homes on wheels, which you mentioned last time. And then we have a gas station in South County and a 20-lot subdivision in Nevada City that we're processing. But we don't have dates at this time.
Okay, any other announcements or information?
So I read in the paper today that it said October, just for the nature of those. And so I just want to go on record, I'm not here in September. So just please note that I'm not here in September.
Great, thank you.
Does the applicant have any desire to collect these plans?
Staff has a desire to collect those plans.
I can't give them to who I want to give them to? Or they belong to the county?
You can give them back to the applicant, but I would prefer staff to maintain them for the time being.
Okay. Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move.